One, um, Mr. Bowen, if you don't mind, sir, would you give us an indication?
Let's go to the father. Lord, again, we thank for this time we've come together. And Father, we were just looking up at the news and we just left all those people out that's been through these storms, um, all the way to South Florida and Tennessee and Georgia and South Carolina, North Carolina, all through there, Father. You're a good God. He controlled all things. And Father, we got ways to help these others. That's what we're here for too. That's why many times you bless, bless us so we can help others. And now just ask you to be with us as we go through this, um, uh, work session, uh, give us a collaborative heart and, uh, in God, as in through Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Thank you.
All right. Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the land of the states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for that. All right, uh, we'll jump right into this, uh, ladies and gentlemen, the approval of the agenda, please. I need a motion for that.
I saw a move.
Can I get a second? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, um, Mr. Bowen, okay, need a copy.
Now, I didn't take bills. I took a check. Is it?
Yeah.
So, so, Mr. Chairman, I will leave while we see. Um, the, the reason why that it's not on the agenda, that B-Dot sheet there is, um, we've been having a lot of calls with things, uh, dead animals inside the road. Mr. Mr. Mayor of Blackstone called me last week, um, and then Ms. Dorton's got some with some furniture and it's in it. If it's in that B-Dot right away, you can call that number and put a work order in. They can, they can, uh, get to it as soon as they can. And they will, and I think if you leave email, they'll tell you when it's complete, right?
They'll give you work order number and you can go online and check and see.
Okay. But I just want y'all to be aware of that. Cause I know sometimes citizens call y'all to fix everything and, and I'm just trying to give you another avenue. But you can also just call office and we'll take care of it. What do you want to do?
Mr. Bowen, if you would, for the people on, uh, online, if you don't mind giving that phone number.
Okay, yeah. One eight hundred three six seven ROAD, R-O-A-D.
All right.
And I don't know what those numbers are right off the top of my head. That would be a good jeopardy question. But anyway.
All right, pull your phone now.
Yeah, pull your phone up.
All right. All right, the next one was to River Street. Um, yeah, Mr. Chairman, the, um, so Mr. Paylor's not here. His, uh, he had a death in his family. Um, and he did send a PowerPoint that he was going to go over. Uh, we did have, um, Gary Elder and Catherine Douglas, I think might, might have been in contact with that for a while. Uh, you'll see the, um, I hope that's in your package, the, uh, the fiber rock and not work. What we like to do to change the, um, the contract, just to make sure that we got our money. Um, uh, we, 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 we are obligating those offer funds and we got to make sure we spend them, Mr. Chairman. And so it really, what the, the last blanks that we filled out, and that was just my input to Catherine, and we were trying to figure out, uh, Catherine Douglas, that is worse than, uh, Felder firm. The, um, she needed time, you know, how much percentage? And I just threw out a number of sixty percent of the project must be cleaned by December thirty first, twenty twenty five, eighty percent of project, uh, March, and one hundred percent September. Trying to give me, give us like three month, you know, window of hundred percent, hundred percent, so we don't lose that offer money. Um, if you, if the board is okay with that, that's, um, I, I, I would like to go ahead and put that in the package for you to vote on, uh, all that.
Do I have to, Gary, did I ring? Do I have to? Should I get a vote for that? I don't know. I didn't think about it. We've already decided to really wanted to do it. If they okay with it.
It's just a timeline.
I'm assuming, uh, the board had already given you the orders.
Yeah, they have. I'm just trying to get your contract.
This would be nothing but a bit of a contract. Okay.
All right, well, board members, uh, so we can give him a consensus without taking a vote yet. Are y'all good with the wording on this?
I think it's fine. They've cleared their way out some direction with time.
Right.
I got a question though.
Yes, please.
In that last paragraph, it says, if it's not completed, it says, the county reserves the right to request adequate assurances of completion. What are adequate assurances of completion?
Do y'all have the, like, the assurances, uh, uh, mentioned somewhere else in this contract, in the agreement?
What she did was she went off the actual contract and tried to amend it. So if you don't, if you don't have the original contract, it's probably hard to miss, answer Ms. Dorton's questions. Um.
I, I think my position will be that would be just a demand to River Street that they basically reconfirm that they're going to do it within that timeline. And I think if they don't, then I think the county can say you're in breach.
Right.
That, that's my position. Is, is if they, if they can't give you a guarantee at that point that they're going to have it done, then they're in breach and we can move on if we choose to do so.
Sounds good to me.
And by signing this letter, they will be agreeing to those assurances. Correct.
It takes so long.
Yes, sir.
And let's make sure that we get this backside. Sometimes things go and go from that, from these folks.
Just clarification, is that about good with those proceedings?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Yes. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Uh, Steve, if you're down there, we're going to the timber plan.
Okay, yeah. So you, we, as you most of know, we hired Mr. Martin as our, um, timber consultant. And, um, he, uh, we met with him back in, oh, in the bottom of first September.
Good to meet you, sir.
I said, um, I said, Brandon, is there any way you can kind of start giving us a plan of what the first step is? And, um, and so he's here tonight to kind of give us an idea of what he thinks, uh, we should move forward with.
Okay.
And Brandon, you got the floor. And thank you for coming tonight. I appreciate it.
Appreciate you, uh, Administrator Bowen, for, for having me. Thank you all, board supervisors, for, for having me. Um, I assume everybody in the package, um, I put together a, a small proposal, a short, short brief, if you will, with some accompanying maps and, um.
They're in there, Brandon. They're in there.
Okay. Just, just to update everybody, I've looked at, uh, just about all of the parcels that make up, uh, I guess now the former LRA, um, wooded parcels around Fort Barfoot. And, um, you know, to me, the parcel that I, I've delineated, I'm calling it the sixty-seven acre parcel, kind of on your map here. This is right just due north of Blackstone Army Airfield. Um, my, my thinking with this, this particular parcel, y'all, is that, um, it's kind of isolated. In, in some ways, it's, it's out of the Fort Barfoot mainstream as far as the main gate. Several of the parcels are in close proximity to the main gate. Not that that's, uh, insurmountable, but at least for us to get started, maybe, uh, working together to have a timber harvest, it's nice to have it a little bit tucked out of the way in some ways. Um, the timber on this parcel, for the most part, is mature. Uh, there's been quite a bit of past land use disturbance. Uh, add the airfield once upon a time, you know, was, was on part of this, this acreage. Um, there's actually some scrubbing material, I think, was designated in the former, uh, the forest management plan that Kirby Wolford put together with the county some years ago as a picnic area. And you can kind of see that as an open, a small open area there. I can point it out to you on your, your aerial photo. And for that reason, it just doesn't, some of the acreage doesn't have real good, what we call in the forestry world, acceptable growing stock. So if we're looking at this from a, a, a financial perspective, I want to have, you know, every acre growing good quality trees for, for the county and, and the taxpayers. So I think in that respect, uh, from a future forest management standpoint, if this parcel is to remain wooded and we manage it into the future, uh, as a, as a woodland investment, um, that is also another pro for us to consider. Um, it also has, this parcel has good access. It's got access, potential logging deck, access off of State Route forty, um, and also off of Dominique Corner Road, um, that the main, the main thoroughfare coming into Blackstone on the airfield. So there are a couple of concerns that I pointed out in the proposal. The yellow lines that are, that are annotated on one version of the map, um, one of those lines, the line that runs more east-west, that's kind of a straight line feature, that is an underground water line, as I understand it. And, uh, the line that kind of looks like, uh, half of a Z, that is a, that is a sewer line. So, uh, anyway, not that that's insurmountable. It's just something that I picked up on in my, uh, initial reconnaissance of the track. And, uh, we, we will need to, especially if we were to decide to move forward with this, we're going to have to put in the, the timber sale contract to, to make sure the, a contractor had, uses, um, you know, madding and, and ground protection measures in wherever they're going to cross.
Are those planted back?
As far as I know, they are, Supervisor. Yes, sir. Um, I, I don't know that for sure, but I think that they are. I would at least until I'm told otherwise, if we weren't to move forward with this.
I, I would certainly want to protect it.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Um. Any, any questions of, of the board or, uh, of Administrator Bowen at this point?
Could you speak to what prices are right now for timber product?
Yeah, um, Supervisor Collins, uh, timber prices are, um, they're, they're fairly strong. They are. I was kind of kidding you earlier. Um, hardwood, hardwood timber prices, um, are definitely on the upswing. Uh, I, I've heard good momentum in recent times. This particular parcel, one of the benefits, and I think I mentioned that as a bullet point in your proposal, it has a little mix of everything. It's got some, it's got some grade pine salt timber. It's got some, what we, in my generic, uh, forestry world, what we call generic, just run-of-the-mill pine salt timber. It's got, um, it's got some poplar and, and mixed oak hardwood salt timber in, that are kind of primarily in the drainage areas. Um, it's got some pine, just straight up pine pulpwood that, that's, um, kind of in the, the younger, the more disturbed, the more recently disturbed footprints. So that having a variety from a logger's perspective can be a good thing because, uh, depending on the time of year that this harvest may occur and, and, uh, who the contractor is, different mills may be on quota. They may not be accepting certain wood products. So if you have a variety of wood products that you're merchandising, that can be a, a value add, uh, for a potential buyer. Uh, pine pulpwood pricing is, is not stellar at this point. I'm, I'm hearing eight to, eight to nine dollar a ton pine pulpwood pricing in today's market. Uh, but this is not a majority pine pulpwood tract. The majority of the, the tonnage is in, is in pine salt timber product classes. However, as I like to tell any landowner that I consult with, um, e- every salt timber tree has a certain component of pulpwood. So the, the upper, the upper twenty-five percent of every tree is pulpwood typically. So just keep that in mind. There's always going to be a significant amount of pine pulpwood tonnage, uh, when you're, even when you're cutting mature pine salt timber.
Are we going into this with a, a clear cut thought?
That, that was, that would be my proposal, Supervisor. The, the, the timber is mature and in my opinion, my professional opinion, it would do, it would do no good to thin this timber.
To go ahead and get it replanted.
Correct. I, I would, I'd recommend that, that, that if we decided on a harvest, that it, it would be clear cut and that, uh, we would, we'd follow up with the proper reforestation methods, likely site preparation, herbicide spray, um, to, to set back any, any growth and competition, then followed by, um, likely law-abiding pine planting, if, if that is the, uh, the wish of the board.
Would you put this item on bid as a clear cut for a lump sum? Would you, would you recommend selling it by a thousand board feet a ton?
Um, that's a great question. Um, it, it can be sold either way. Uh, I do per unit sales. Um, it, it's typically wood today is not sold on a per thousand board foot. It is sold on the ton. Even, even the hardwood markets now predominantly are sold on the ton. So we would just, if you just, if the board decided we wanted to do that, um, we could certainly talk about that further. The lump sum advantage would be, and I think, um, when, when I initially met with, uh, Administrator Bowen, um, of course, the, the, the money is upfront with, with a lump sum transaction. So we would typically advertise the timber sale for thirty to forty-five days on average. We'd hold a sale date. Uh, from that sale date, typically I would hold a closing within thirty days of the sale date.
And giving them what to harvest it in? Twelve months, eighteen months?
Typically, in today's markets, y'all, I advise up, up to twenty-four months. That's, that's not untypical.
Um, I, I. It's a whole desirable tract to be harvested in one of, one of months.
I, I, I don't think that it is, Supervisor, to tell you why. Y'all see all those blue lines on that map?
I see.
It's a tremendous amount of water features in, in this, in this tract. That's what's designated by that in the, in the legend. You see LRA water. That was just my generic vernacular to, to tell you that those are drainages. And then everywhere in those blue lines, we're going to probably have a, what we call a stream side management zone. There, there will be a, a wooded buffer left.
How long, how wide?
It, it typically is, is fifty feet.
Fifty feet.
Per side.
Per side.
Per side.
I, I will say, in my, in my professional opinion, some of the buffers, a couple of these are really minute features. We likely would not need to, to do that. By law, the, the, the recommendation that the Virginia Department of Forestry puts forth is fifty foot. That is a recommendation.
That's not a law.
That is not a law. That is correct. So.
Is, is, is there a law, certain feet?
That, there is not. No. The only, the only law is, is that you cannot pollute the water.
Yeah.
Yeah. We could, we could technically cut every tree on these drainages if you could prove to the Department of Forestry that you did not contribute to erosion and sediment in, in the stream courses. So that, that is the fact of the matter, um, with that. Uh, I do think these drainages deserve protection. Uh, do I think that all of them maybe need a, a full fifty foot buffer? I, I don't know that they do. And I'll tell you, so many of them, it, it's, it's going to be quite chopped up as it is. So I won't know fully. This map, of course, is a draft map. It was just to kind of show you, you know, a rough idea of what I thought with, uh, the stream side management zones on the ground. And, um, I do think it will be close, but I, I'll, of course, have a finished version. Once I do, the all, I, I will GPS and flag every one of these and, and have a, have a final version of this. So this map is just a draft.
Mr. Martin, the hardwood per ton, I, I, I may have missed it when you said, did you say what you thought the hardwood per ton was running to a dollar?
It, it, it's going to depend on by, by species, Supervisor. So, um, grade poplar versus grade oak, uh, red oak versus white oak. If, if we decided to, to entertain a per unit sale, those, those would be, uh, product classes that we would likely break out.
Okay.
In, in the, in the sale.
Mr. Elder, this is not sale of real estate. This is a sale of property or personal property owned by the county. Brandon puts it out for sale, receives his bids back. We received those. Should we vote to allow Mr. Bowen to sign that?
Yeah, I don't think that requires a public hearing because it's a sale of timber, not sale of.
Just a, just a discussion among what bids we receive.
Correct. Correct. It would just, it would, in my view, would be the same as if you were selling personal property out of an office, basically. Selling an interest in real estate.
Brandon, do you put a, a right to refuse any bid?
I, I typically do.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, I do. Uh, so we will have the right to refuse any and all bids.
Right.
That, that is typically a condition of the, of the timber sale.
Cool.
Yes, sir.
Is, is, is all bids, uh, exposed? Was it sealed bids and only to have them is exposed?
No, all, all bids will be, it, it will be a, a public bid, okay?
Oh, really?
Yes, sir. Okay. Yeah.
I've been, I've sold some that it was only private.
Right.
Only sealed in a high date. Couple of them asked me, if we didn't get it, we don't care to know who got it. But we want to know who the high bid is.
It's all price well. It's always my common practice that I, anybody that is respectful enough to submit a bid, and I will share the data of what the, what the opening was. Rather, I, I do not share that data with anybody else.
Just those who are there.
Just those that are made of.
Yes, sir. Yeah. So therefore, we don't have to, we wouldn't have to, we can vote in open session. I mean, we're not, we got to vote in open session, but we can vote to receive. Then again, the, the authority to sign the contract because everything's open anyway, right, Gary? You don't, you don't have to open the bids in a closed meeting or nothing like that.
Right.
But he's handling the opening.
Yeah, right. So we don't, we just.
You don't just present up with the idea.
Yeah. I, I, I. That, that's exactly right. I would, I would present, um, what the, the findings or the, the results of the sale.
You would be, you would be full of, so.
I got it.
Yes, sir.
And typically after that, no matter whether we decided to do a, a, uh, per unit style timber sale or a lump sum sale, I typically do, traditionally, I do a timber deed for, for, for my landowners on their behalf.
A lot of buyers are corporate private.
And, and particularly to get a loan on it. That, that's correct. Yeah. That, and, um, so if they want it recorded, I'll let them handle that. If they don't want it recorded, then I will handle it. Actually, I've got a, a draft, a template that I've used for many, quite a few years. Um, it came from an attorney and would be glad to let Mr. Elder look over that, but it's, it's passed muster quite a few times.
Do you generally operate on a percentile?
I, I typically work off a commission basis.
And what's that commission?
So it's going to depend. My structure that I did for the county was based off of the, the total revenue.
Okay.
But, uh.
So whatever the high bid is, it can be a percentage based off of that?
That's correct. Yes, sir. Yeah. Based on what the, uh, what, where, where it fell in that threshold. And pardon me, I'm not, not looking at even what I, uh, what I originally put together.
Yeah, a little matrix depending on.
Right.
Yeah. And then if, then if we refuse the high bid because of whatever reason, you still get paid?
I, I did. I think I had a, you know, if, if our business was working towards a timber sale and, and all as well, I, I typically work off of a commission. Otherwise, I did put a place an hourly rate in my cost of service.
Gotcha.
I was just concerned about that for you, Andy. Yeah, well, I appreciate, I appreciate your asking.
Mr. Mr. Collins, last question about, about some, um, value here. Was part of that value, wondering a guesstimation of value, or do we want to have that conversation?
Okay, all right.
I, I have to be so many variables to take. It could be, it could be nine thousand dollar a ton, some of it would be nine hundred dollar a ton.
It, it, it is. And I'm just going to be honest with y'all. I can tell you that right away. I, I'd rather not talk value at this point because I have not formally cruised it. I, I will, you know, I, I didn't want to put that effort into it at this point until I, you know, it seemed like we were positively moving forward and, uh, then I.
Everybody pretty interested in having the timber sale.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Um, there, there are several other blocks that, that are very valuable as well. Again, my, my thoughts were that this would just make a good, a good starting point for, for the, for the first iteration. And, um, I think that was the way, um, my proposal with, with the county worked is that we would, we'd make a, make a start. Um, we could do an after action review. Hopefully everything goes well on this and everybody's pleased. And we may move on to other blocks if, if y'all so choose.
Is any of the blocks more mature than it? Well, this is easiest access because you said start with the least tucked away kind of.
Yeah, thi- this timber is just as mature as any. The, all, honestly, all of the blocks are fairly mature, quite frankly. Uh, they're, all of them are, in my opinion, especially from a pine, the mature pine that is certain.
See, it has some, some bug damage because it already had sit in on some of them.
Yeah, there, there's definitely been a little mortality over the years and that's not, it's not uncommon in a state this, this age. It's just, uh, it's just par for the course. Okay. All right. Well, everybody seems to be in agreement to move forward with our next steps on that. So, uh, Brandon, we want to thank you for coming by. Let's see if anybody's got any other questions, though. All right. Let me go ahead and talk to the bid back. If, if y'all are in agreement, I'll, uh, I will, I will probably hit the ground running and try to do some, some cruising evaluation work and, uh, put together the, uh, the proposal. Steve, I'll probably will float that by you.
Okay.
And, uh, let's get your blessing before, uh, sending it out to potential buyers.
Yeah, send that D. But I think I got a copy of D, but send it anyway, just so I can get Gary's team. I know you've already been through it, but I'd rather the team to look at it.
Yeah, absolutely. I would want him to, to look at it ahead of time so we can be prepared if we do need to amend a D, we can do so.
So we got timeline on this?
Though we, I don't want to do it. We have timeline. I, y- y- you, you guys tell me. I, I'd like a little breathing room, but, uh.
I mean, the sooner the better without breaking your neck.
A- a- absolutely. As you have it put together by Daniel.
Yeah, I, I think.
Not that the bids will be in by January. Yeah.
You know, y'all.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I think that gives me plenty of time to, to get it worked up and we may be able to put it out on the street ahead of time and maybe, maybe have a bid opening in January. That, that sometimes seems everybody comes out of the.
When you set a date on it that they must be in?
I typically set a date and a time.
Yes, okay. Got you. Um, one thing I would request is that we know who, we don't even know what each bid will bid it. Because we only interested in the highest bid, but I would like, uh, for us to know who bid it on the timber.
Absolutely.
You know, well, that'd be one person and of course it won't be five, six, and who they were.
Right. Absolutely. Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I, I would share, uh, I, I would share all the, all the details, um, who, who bid what and et cetera.
I think if we say who bid what, we might, that might go into a public sort of, help me, I have the image kind of thing. If, if somebody bid it, just saved seven hundred and fifty-six thousand, the next bidder was seven hundred and fifty thousand, they say, well, that was mighty close. Why don't y'all open the back up? Man, it's just getting too good. I have seen that happen. I think maybe we, we only need to know what the highest bid above.
That would probably make sense. I mean, even, but if somebody did say that, I'd still take the position that. That would be my position.
Well, we need to be transparent over.
Yep.
Yeah.
People ask questions about.
With, with the ad, with the advertisement of this sale, um, you know, representing the county's interest, um, you know, it, I, I have a list of, of timber buyers. I think it's pretty intensive, um, but just to make sure I don't, you know, that we're open and transparent with the county. Like for me to put an advertisement in the, the Courier, in the local newspaper or something of that nature? Is that necessary? Um, or is that, is that?
I don't think it is. You probably got it.
Yeah. Uh, I like to think I do. I just don't want to try to, you know, I don't, I, I've never worked in, in this type of capacity. Most of the time, y'all bear with me. I've been, you know, ser- serving private landowners' interests and, uh, not, you know, not a, a county government.
So we can put it on our Facebook and Canada.
We'll be talking about it. It won't don't matter.
And if any, anybody in the room or anybody in the general public has a recommendation, somebody may not have been included in it, would be interested. Would you care to hear that?
Absolutely. If I can, if I'll have their contact information, I'd be glad to mail them a, a paper copy. Some, some buyer, we, we do communicate these days a lot via email. Most of my bid solicitations are emailed, but I do have some, some folks that I still mail some paper. Paper advertising.
Yes, the old school, actually.
That's right. Yes, sir.
The salmon brown.
All right. Well, thank you again, Mr. Martin, and, um.
Good day.
Yep.
All right.
We'll, we'll rock on to the next step here. All right. Uh, Mr. Dody got something on the, uh.
Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you, sir.
I, I appreciate it. I'm going to, uh, to Florida if y'all.
Thank you, sir.
So just a little fun fact, uh, his wife was, was the bear biologist. You knew that one.
We'll see her back there.
Yeah. I don't know how he found a bear biologist, but he did a good job.
She is, uh, she's, she's eager to, uh, to, to update the board on, uh, the bear population sometime when, uh, maybe we don't have, uh. I thank y'all for having me.
Thank you, Brandon. Thank you. Have seats around. Um, it's really all we need to do, whatever y'all decide. We need to advertise for three things. The state agreement ordinance at the board of the full field orders, um, uh, application fee. Then, sorry. Um, and then at the very end, the building piece, uh, for the inspection and stuff. Yeah. That's really, y'all's call when you want to sit. Public hearing, um.
The public hearing is, and we can sit the public, this is the final draft, right?
Yes. Well, I haven't got any feedback from anybody.
No, we, why do we have to have another, another public hearing? Cause we made that one a couple of teams.
Well, you, and I defer to Mr. Elder, but, um, what I understood with the previous council was that, I think it's, is it two-two oh four, two-two eight-five in the state code, you're required, you, I don't think they have to, that's.
Well, we don't have to have planning. It's just us.
Yeah.
You know.
Yes. It'd be more of a transparency.
That's how I remember it.
Yeah. So it'd be a trans.
Yeah, it's more of a transparency and everything.
Mr. Gary, for your application, the planning commission moved it to the, uh, Board of Supervisors earlier this year. And, um, the board held off for a while, so I think they put it down and then wanted to go back and review it. And then, um, what the, the attorney at the time, the attorney at the time recommended that, you know, they, they don't have to hold the second public hearing because we had a twenty-year hold here last year or early this year, I believe. And, uh, so that's where we kind of are.
Yeah. So we didn't vote, this, this board didn't vote it down. We just didn't vote, right? I think we.
No, we didn't vote it down. We just didn't vote.
Right? I heard you say we voted it down.
I thought it was voted down. It was three-two vote.
Yeah.
Yeah, Dick and I voted for.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
All right. So.
So I think you have to have it.
Oh, look, I'm saying, that's why I didn't get it. You have to.
You have to advertise two weeks ahead of the dates.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're essentially restarting the process, which sounds like we may be doing, yeah.
But it doesn't have to go through the planning commission again, right?
I think it would.
Same ordinance with a couple of teams.
Yeah, the one that changes is, so the substantial change is the, it's a twenty percent increase or twenty-five percent increase.
Well, we had a forty acres.
Depending on the circumstances and the, the layout of the land. Did we do anything? You know, we talked about the law, the large landhold and breaking up land and putting it side by side.
No, I haven't.
And we could, you could even suggest, make that suggested, uh, at the public hearing. Yeah, just, uh, yeah, that scared me.
You talking about somebody that's got, somebody that was in LLC, sick process law, so they sleep fifty acres on.
Yeah, that, that brings it, but here's the thing though. That bring, that would create a major subdivision which we have to go to the Board of Supervisors for.
When they develop, divide.
Both three or more is a major subdivision.
How many?
Three lots or more.
Three lots. So lots not going by size?
Sorry, no, just three lots.
So a thousand acres divided by three, thirty-three, three times, would I like him a hundred and fifty acres on that thousand acres? So otherwise, they would only be like. So, otherwise, they would only be like, right? If you stayed in one pot.
Every two years, every two years, and that's our definition of, of our kind of division.
So, after two years for lots, you can divide it?
Yeah, but you can still divide as many lots as you want now.
But it's just subdivided.
Yeah, but, but it has to go through the major process, the major subdivision process. You can, right now, because I've had an argument that we spoke about, a customer of mine in Strong versus Orange County Board of Supervisors. And that county, Orange County, said, you can only do one cut every four years, period. And you're putting a time constraint on that, that's in the Alton Mall district.
Well, that, that should vary depending on what the, the tech board is. If, if you got a farm and you wish to divide it amongst your kids.
That's family subdivision, we treat that differently.
Okay.
See, that, that's, that's one thing that concerns me, I can see that happening.
Yeah, say it for me, so I can get around my head.
Okay, all right, let's, let's think about twenty-three hundred acres.
Okay. It sound like to me you got a specific piece of land that.
That's the one that started all this. Twenty-two thousand forty-five, let's just. All right, just saying. But, but I'm, I'm, what I'm saying to you is, if you say you can divide it three times, then you will have three different, three different solar sites on that piece of property. Yeah, and here's a glitch though, and then I, I want to fix this in our subdivision orders, is that we have to drill down on the, on the definition of division because the customer I was talking to a while later, the surveyor said, well, you know, it's really hard to, to understand what we're saying. I see kind of playing myself.
Well, let's, let's speed play, one sentence in here, the subdivision may not be completed for the purpose of a solar parcel, a permit will not be issued.
I like that.
Mr. Elder, what is the timeframe if a person goes into a merchant home and gets their assets away? How many years they got to wait for? Five years, okay?
Yeah, because as I say, if you, you were kind enough to give me somebody that was your uncle or cousin or whatever, however we define family in the county, I have to wait five years before I dispose of that, before I sell it.
You'll write that down, I guess you can, you can watch the tape.
No, I don't think that's not right. Did you get that one now? And I didn't catch what he said, it is accurate.
All right, yeah, I'd have to hear it too.
The subdivision cannot be made for the purposes of a solar permit, a permit will not be issued.
Any subdivision, oh subdivision, okay.
For purposes of the procurement of multiple solar permits, right?
Correct.
Well, you, you brought, I, I get what you're saying, I, I think what you'd have to do is you'd have to say essentially that it applies to the same applicant.
One fifty acres.
Where, where are you gonna run into a potential problem is, and I don't know what you do about this, what if the applicant splits it, conveys part two into an LLC and then the LLC has a different ownership.
It's in the parent track, so.
And technically, the way Gary West.
If he cuts it off and then they come and ask for a solar permit, we can go back to that. You were told.
But we have the authority either way to deny a permit, period, right?
Yeah, but it'd help us a whole lot to have the panel spelled out a little bit because they can take some favoritism.
To me, the way to solve this is to say, if you got a fifty acre tract here, gotta have a solar site on it, can't have another within a mile or two miles, then you're not gonna have.
Yeah, I mean, I'll tell you, you get off to two thousand acres, you get, he's taking that same owner out.
Well, see, that's what, I think Amelia's got that.
Are you, are you saying you're proposing a fifty acre maximum or minimum?
Maximum.
Maximum, okay, all right, maybe because, you know, I, I, most of my experience in dealing with these things is most of the times when these solar companies come in and it's all basically ends up being Dominion, what they're looking for is as much, you know, high and in a specific area as they possibly.
The citizens of this county have not been in favor of industrial salt, and the ordinance does not support that.
Yeah, well, if, if you're limited to fifty acres, that, that's pretty clear, you know, frankly, have much solar. And if that's what the board wants and that's what the county wants.
Pretty much what the county wants.
This is probably.
This is a medium, a medium scale salt.
Yeah. Got you.
We did have a few citizens that were trying.
Yep. Um, and I should add, the other documents in here are, are the sign agreement, or the, yeah, sign agreement that the county is creating, the document needs to be updated, so I'd like, I'll take a month and look at that over. Then the building fees for my bill.
Signing fee.
Yes, sir, and then the application fee, fifteen hundred dollars as proposed, you know, I think that'll double up, that's just me.
All right, so it sounds like the target here then is probably gonna be the December meeting to have the public hearing and possibly go ahead and vote on this. But that's if we go ahead and get these things already put in place and presented to the public.
Where did you get, these are Sussex County's numbers?
Yeah, those are good, that's what Antivino's working on back.
These are well loaded, what they're getting now. There's been some site agreements just for the permit, twenty-five thousand dollars per megawatt, I think west of here. And then annual, and then annual payments of eighteen hundred dollars per megawatt.
Yeah, that's why I wanted y'all to look at that, that information.
So, this is not.
Yeah, so we just, that's, that's what we need to, but Gary, your, your take is, your opinion is that we should take it back to the planning commission?
I'm, I'm actually writing a note about that right now, especially since you want to bring it back up in December. I mean, my position would be, I, I would need to probably look it up, but, you know, the board, the board voted down the initial ordinance, and now we have a revised ordinance that has different requirements in the ordinance. And so, to me, I would think it would need to start with planning commission. And then they would need to make a recommendation to the board because we're not dealing with the same ordinance.
Okay, but the practical brain of Steve Bowen, and I put myself in the bin on the planning commission.
Practical is a totally, don't usually.
But, but I'm on the planning commission, I gave you, I gave you what we thought was right, you turned it down, and now you gonna tell me what is right and you gonna send it back to, you just don't do it yourself then.
No, I mean, I. I think it's more procedural is what you're talking about.
Yeah, they don't have to take action either, I mean, they could just say, yeah, we.
I think that's what you might get. Cause I, I really, the solar thing is so controversial, I think the plan, I'm, I protect the planning commission, I think they were getting tired of it.
Well, yeah, well, yeah, I mean, we're, what, eighteen months coming up with a settlement?
It's been a tough.
And it got turned down.
Right, right.
There's some folks that weren't happy.
Well, then, if it's going back to the planning commission, then you're looking at either another joint public hearing or they have to hold it. Yeah, so you looking, you into next year, man? So, you're in the next year.
Why don't we do this, why don't y'all give, give us a week or two to get back on whether, whether we clarify? I'm, I'm leaning heavily that it needs to go to planning commission, but if there's a way we can avoid that, knowing that that's what the board wants.
Well, if we don't have to go to planning commission, I think we can not get, put this to bed in December.
Yeah. I'm having a second tip that what happens if you make an ordinance more restrictive, you don't have to send it back to the planning commission, but if you make, if you loosen up the regulations on, on density or what have you, then it, it has to go back to a planning commission.
The only thing that, that creates a wrinkle here is, you know, we voted it down already.
Right.
I mean, a lot of times, a lot of times the board would just say, we're gonna send it back to planning commission, and we'd like these revisions of the planning commission to give a recommendation, but in this case, I, I, the way I knew is gonna start from scratch.
Yes.
Cause we rejected the previous ordinance.
Yeah, no, I agree with you, I, I, cause I completely forgot.
I don't like giving that answer.
No, it's like. Well, we couldn't amend, we just committed, we didn't agree.
No, then you, you're outside of the thirty days where one that was on a prevailing sack could bring back a couple votes.
Well, that's true too.
So, and I, I have planning commission on Tuesday night, we'll, we have it, Mr. Green, I have that. And Mr. Green, welcome to the planning commission, and I'll bring it up during updates, staff updates, and just give, you know, feel a moment. Okay, I think y'all will probably hear from, and they'll inform you.
At our last work session, when y'all finish Jenna first, then I got some more.
I was just gonna say that, that buffer, to give them some direction so they can move forward on some of this stuff, that buffer that you're talking about, Dickie, I think is a good idea, do y'all, would y'all like to set up around an existing up to fifty acre site? And that buffer, do you want a mile, do you want a half mile, do you want three miles? What do you, what would y'all?
I, I think Amelia's is two, three, one of the things that I saw from Amelia.
So, there will now be another permit issue within two miles of an existing solar, right?
Period, whether it be a different landowner or what have you.
All right.
Good mouth.
And y'all, y'all, y'all good with a mouth?
Of course, if you. I think that's what probably.
I mean, it's fine. The only thing I would have trouble with that is, if I want to put fifty acres across road, meaning it was a desirable place by Dominion, as you said, they only interested in more desirable place. And the landowner across road said, well, well, Bo want to pay out a permit first, now I can't get mine, and it's, and I'd have had this land forty years before he had it, and now I can't get that either, right? That's kind of.
Concern I would have, and I gotta think about this more, I understand what y'all are trying to do, the concern I have is, what if Dominion approaches two landowners, some own land adjacent to one another, and they both apply for a permit at the same time? And now, you gotta pick which one.
Yeah, that's, then it's gonna be on the bidding process, and Dominion's gonna get the cheapest one to let them in there.
And they have to go through the PRB or whatever that process, that, that national clearinghouse.
I think we need to set some more in stone to the, to the subdividing of it on a five-year timeframe or something like that, if it's been, if it's been surveyed off within the last five years, it's, it's ineligible to be able to have a permit with all.
Gary, have you, have you heard what the setbacks are on?
Cause it's the first time I've seen.
The project area shall be setback a distance of at least eight hundred feet from all public rights away, fifteen hundred feet from having a dwelling, and a distance of at least eight hundred feet from adjacent property.
Do land like that in the county?
Exactly correct, it's just like the whole house thing they didn't want.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's perfectly correct, there's nothing wrong with it, that's, that's what the county board wants, that's fine.
If that's what the county board wants, but it ain't exactly what Bo Thuth wants. No, no, it's just like the hog house, they took that thing right straight out to hog house, and that's what they wrote about. Cause they didn't want, you had a couple old fogies on the moat back then, they didn't want no hog, because they didn't have anything to do with agriculture. In a rural agricultural community, so to say, we'll put these setbacks and it takes five hundred acres to get to hog house with a mile road front. And you can't get but two, it's that, you go up into Charlie, Corlize, and you got hog houses, it's, I mean, it's great job. You talking about, we need jobs, but you don't let something come about. The whole solar thing is bull crap anyhow, it's only twenty-two percent effective, we all know that. But I just, I don't like, it's saying you don't want solar in out of a camp, lump it, you don't have no choice. You've been a landowner all your life and you can't do what you want to do, just like you can't man your own land. I don't read it.
It's up to y'all.
Y'all already know either, if you get down to it. Unless you ain't got no land, you know, it ain't never gonna be no solar, I, I have some land that's not in a desirable place. Dominion's not interested in my area, I don't have no, I'm just saying that if a person does, and you tell them they can't have it because you gotta have the setbacks, who owns the land? The person who owns the land or not a way county owns it?
Well, you know, we wouldn't have, you'd be having this discussion if politicians in DC and the state keep their mouth shut, quit ripping people off.
Totally agree. Then we'd have to.
If I could point out, we still have to, we still have the general assembly, and I think it's Senate Bill six fifty-seven or six ninety-seven, I forgot which one. We'll probably be coming back up again.
Yeah, where they're basically trying to take power out of.
Like they need with the bow side. But it's, we, we've heard it, if we can establish something, get it.
I just, you know.
It would help.
I would like to have an ordinance. My thinking is, you know, you can go back and look at history, there's always gonna be somebody telling you what you can do with your land.
Yeah, that's true.
To a certain extent.
The latest. Big extent.
The latest fact I read is that seventy-three percent of the active projects, the actual construction projects on solar right now are under DEQ violates.
Yep.
Seventy-three.
Yeah, I read that.
Yep. That, that, you know.
It's cheaper, it's cheaper to not follow and pay a fine than it is.
Yeah, I mean, they got more to pay, then you can pay the fine.
Well, Brandon told me something on the timber just now, he said that fifty-foot mark is not right away, that's a recommendation. And long as you don't put, and long as you don't put it, so that answers my question as to why I see some people leaving the buffer, and some people don't leave nothing, and I see trees in it, in the creek. If you gonna have it, no force, it don't, you know, it's bad. The hour open is, I went to Southside Electric's legislative day and Dominion Power came there and the, because the data centers and data, whatever you want, that cellphone everyone's got, someone's got two, all that stuff, they're, they're looking at power consumption doubling in the next ten years, and they don't have it. Right, but I mean, that's what they're reaching for, I mean, that's what they're reaching for, something they don't have, I mean, it's just, and if enough of somebody says, wow, what do we do? They, they don't have the answer, engineers don't have. Well, we all know that this is a fact, depend, depending upon the next administration, it's more, you're going, whether you're gonna hear more go green or less go green. But we all know that.
Well, the, the answer to it, it picks all their problems, but it starts here in Ottawa. They need to go and build a data center right out there at Fort Pickett, Microsoft going to build a data center out there, and then they need to come on down here on the western end of the county and let Dominion build a big power plant. Now, close to the railroad track where the coal coming, what's the name, the power we go? There you go. Now, now, all of a sudden, that starts turning for them.
Starts creating jobs too.
I hope they'll buy.
But somebody. So, a little bear note back, he said, him and I had a conversation, he says, the answer, and the, and the answer is nuclear power, but I don't want to be in that public hearing. You think solar's bad.
I'm bringing, well, you're gonna have nuclear, you're gonna have war with that.
Right, I like it.
So, I guess what, Bo doesn't agree with this setback.
So, what's that?
I'm sorry, I said Bo didn't agree with the setbacks that are in here, Dickie wants to restrict it further with a buffer, a mile radius, two mile radius buffer.
It don't sound like you ready for a public hearing, I'm just gonna be honest with you.
They don't, I think we need to, I think we need to have a sit-down meeting. Or session just for this? You get that? Maybe. I mean, cause we, we, we've been staying for so long, I don't know what else to do.
Well, we had, we had so much else go on since all of us looked at this thing.
Yeah, we couldn't even remember how I was voting the party.
I, I didn't think it out.
That's Dickie's way of saying this could have been over when you would be talking about with the work session.
I think with some careful language and some discussion, we can all be happy on something that gives a landowner somewhat of a right to do what they not want to do, but would intend to do if they got enough of the setbacks, but those.
The first step is, we gotta go back to plan.
We're gonna have to do that, we either have a joint meet, well, then go back to them, we need to talk to them first, and we need to keep sending stuff to them if we don't.
If we don't agree.
Exactly. But while we was talking about this, what I was gonna say was, as the last work session meeting, we was talking about dwellings, where people come up and write on a little piece of paper, you know, where they wanted to put a, a house, little shed or something, and you had met some fallbacks that they were, they weren't within the, whatever the required features was. The boundary line, yeah. So, and it was saying about a survey, and I said, how can you force a landowner to have a survey if they bought their farm and grossed it back? So, cause you can't force a survey, but it was more to my attention that the survey being talked about wasn't really made clear. It's a site survey, it's not a full survey of the person's land. Field survey, site survey, it's about a two to five hundred dollar survey versus, like on my, my particular parcel, when I put my house there, I drew it, voted up here for the county, and it was approved because I was, I said, I'm ever how many feet from my adjacent landowner. The problem was, is if a person don't have a idea where the adjacent landowner property line is, they might be thirty feet.
So, it sounds like you might be talking to some along lines of a boundary survey plan.
Yeah, not even that, it's, it's, it's referred to two surveyors in the county as a site survey. So, so he comes out and compiles a, just a little short, making sure you meet the minimum setback, and it costs you, and, and he said, two of them, he and he, one crew, one backstone, said it's almost a must-be-done kind of thing. Because if not, y'all are running into cap, running into trouble, not meeting the setback because the person thought the land was over there, so they skipped the only little application that you got, you know what I'm talking about?
Yes, sir.
That's happened a few times. But I wanted to, I wanted to let people know, cause one person called me that hadn't had to do the survey and said, I totally agree, how can you force somebody to do a survey of the whole place and they bought it on the grossed it back? I said, that's how I bought mine. But where you run into problem is the smaller parcels, if they want to put a dwelling on and they not, we own land, I checked the LRA, they don't even know what land is. But where you're running into problem is the smaller parcels, that they wanna put a dwelling on, and they're not, we own land, I tell the LRA. They don't even know what land is. You gotta know what land is.
Yep.
Even if you read it, it don't have to be surveyed. It can say going through a nine-inch cherry tree in nineteen sixty-one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so Bo to get the county out of, we didn't wanna be. Uh, you know, we, we, we don't wanna be held responsible for someone because they don't know what the line is.
Right.
So what we did was, and Nick, you might have me on this, on the application when they do the building permit, it's something, we, we put, it's a statement on this is.
Best of their knowledge.
Yeah, but I came up with something like the, the boundary line, you know, it, 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 has this ser, has this been surveyed? Yes or no?
And the question is no. So then you get your sketch, you're on the application, it could be done incorrectly.
But they gotta sign it. I mean.
Like the county did years ago, it's like, I tell them they gotta move the house. And then they moved the house and they still ain't finding nothing.
Well, we, we, we got one situation now, that a, a mobile home was supposed to be put on the property. A hundred feet from the, from the, the, it was a hundred feet to a hundred feet from the property line. Well. The mobile home company came out there and put it thirty-five feet, but, you know, so, so they called Nick out there. To, just, just to look to see if we got the right footings and, uh, he looks and sees we got, yeah, the right footings. He don't know where the property line is.
That falls back to that site survey.
That's right.
But they paid a survey and said, do a, a show little site survey to see if I'm permitted to put this house where I think I am. It might ought to be required, because it would say.
But in the meantime, the eighty, the eighty old grandma's in the, in the home, she started, and then the, the Jason landowner says, that's too close. They didn't follow the zoning.
That's what I'm talking about.
Now, now what we're doing?
Well, you got that site survey, he could have never done it if it didn't pass on.
So it gotta go from the zoning appeal board, right? Right, that's what the next step is.
But on that trailer, if it's thirty-five foot, the requirement is a hundred. You don't get away from that yet.
Right.
Somebody like move foot.
You gotta move foot, you gotta move electric, everybody.
It's a twenty-five, it's about a twenty-five foot difference on the side, side property line.
If they go twenty-five feet, you're going down the hill, right?
At the cost of who? Right, so if that owner, if, if the owners already got lending, which should be a lending. Thought process too, and say, you know, I'm gonna lend money on this mobile home. And then later find, they say, well, that, that, it can't go there.
Ain't there some sort of hardship on that though?
Is it, could be a hardship.
For conditional use.
Right. But at that point, they've got what they want, even if they go around.
Alright.
But I don't see forces somebody to do a full survey on a tract of land for the house. But the site survey is much different.
Man, we don't do that, right? We don't force a survey, right? So we haven't done that.
No, but, but, but we may should consider a site survey. We should discuss it further.
Yeah, a site survey is pretty much you draw.
The survey.
It's a compiled, so, so, so he's going to take. This, this is the gross, you know, each and back. But this piece over here was surveyed, this piece over here was surveyed, this one over here. So he's got some information that he can compile in shape of this one.
I'll survey, I'll certify, sorry.
Yeah, so my survey can compile a survey based on existing data. And then what you want is a, you know, the X, this is where the house.
And to go further than that, Bill, if neither one of those parcels or, or one of them not be surveyed that's adjacent to it. He can still come out and do a little field work, going back to that nine-inch cherry tree in nineteen sixty-one. And say, by looking at what I've read here and exhibits of your land description, you've met the required whatever feature, uh, setback. And then it will sort of fall back on him if it's incorrect.
Okay, so you want, you want us to open that one back up?
I think we should.
Okay, I got you. I will. I closed it in my hand, bro. Government is so sluggish.
Alright.
No, I don't think it needs.
So what, solar's gonna go to that self to a discussion session?
So what, what do you have next month?
Yeah, no, we, we, we're good. I think I had, I was gonna bring this guy back again, Taylor. I mean, I don't know what to do about this. He's gotta sign that contract, cause.
Well, we can bring him in first, and it just.
We got no time to.
Major part of the work session. Next, next time would be about salt.
Yeah.
Dude, why don't you, just thought, can we invite the chairman and the vice chairman of the planning commission here with us?
Yes.
Bring him to let them listen.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and input.
Yeah.
If, just, pardon me, but if we were gonna talk about. Adding a requirement for surveying or doing a site survey for. Anytime we're building a new home, we have to consider the localities. Inside of Nottaway as well. So what do we do about the townships? But not only that, if we're adding that, then. Then we probably need to consider raising the cost of permit fees, because it's gonna be additional work for the staff as well. So if we have to go out and make sure that these site surveys are correct, or if they're even necessary, how do we?
I don't think. Uh, not interruption, I don't think I am, Nick, but I don't think that, that the county and building inspector. Would need to go, I mean, they already accepted the application with a little drawing on it. Sitting in your office and not going out until they, till you doing an actual permit inspection. I don't see that there'd be no need for anybody to go out. If that, if that certified survey has done a site survey. The only time you would go out is when you done the building, when you, how many times you go, I'm sure it's multiple times, in the phase of building the house.
Is the survey to be conducted at the time prior to the application?
Site survey, yes, correct.
And if they move it, who's gonna inspect?
If, if they move what?
If they don't put the house with a flat set.
Then it takes down the building when he goes out to issue the permit.
You're gonna have to inspect.
You'll have to go back and, are you inspecting it now?
Not even if you have to, but if you're gonna require a plaque, I think Nick's on the song. You can hand me a plaque with a staked-out house and all that kinda stuff. But if I don't put it where it's supposed to go, who's gonna determine whether it's earned or not?
No, it's, it, it, no, it's like the Utah River and Ranitree, or put some environmentally safe paint on it, so they can at least pull a ruler within reason.
Well, where's he gonna put a ruler to? He's gonna walk through the site survey.
Right, I'm saying, once they start staking it off. They got from point A to point B, and give them a measurement, it's supposed to be a hundred feet, and he says.
So it, it apparently, whatever the setback he is great. Going back to that mobile home you was talking about, where, where did the neighbors install it? That, that footing was put in there? Too close to that adjacent landowner.
Well, actually, I think it was the, uh, the.
The home that the company sold it on?
No, I, I think there's a mutual blame on that in that respect, because they got ahead, the property owners got ahead of themselves. And, uh, went and did the excavation there themselves. Up on the Dust Town Road, and it's, uh, the side yard setbacks in that district, there's some fifty feet from the side. Hundred feet from the road, they're good on the right front, and so they were about twenty-five feet off this. All we know, all we think we know, is the side property line, it's just a barbed wire fence. And so.
It's in a lot of lanes. A barbed wire, old barbed wire fence line is in a lot of lanes.
Yeah, and, but I'm just saying, you know, just based on what I know, but. Um, and I believe they worked it out. I have, I need to follow up on that.
I see, I see what you're saying, cause otherwise they could put it a hundred foot over.
Why you doing the busy work at that point, raising the cost of the house? Get a survey or do it? But if you're gonna put teeth in and have somebody go out there and.
They don't need to.
That's the intention, right? Then, then, then you do it something, but just get somebody to hand you a piece of plastic. And not follow up. You just, you don't.
Pulling money away.
Bureaucracy, yeah. You're just creating another level of.
It needs to be discussed about. I said, you can't force nobody to get a survey, but. I was not ever told that they were speaking specifically for a site survey, not a full survey. Nobody gonna force me to pay no nine-nine-dollar survey of my farm, if I don't want to do it.
Well, we'll, we'll bring it, we'll, we'll, it won't be at the, solar right now is more important, but I will make sure that that's gonna be on the agenda. We might be passing it, passing, but we're gonna keep it on that until we can get to it.
Alright, we're gonna jump on this, uh, tax abatement, uh, program and Blake.
So, um, I think Catherine and everyone has done, Garris Farm has done their due diligence on that. Is it, and we, we, we were supposed to give him some, give them some more input. What you didn't like or wouldn't like, and I don't know, and I think, um, Andrea sent out, sent out a reminder, if you got any input, you know. And I don't know where it's in yet.
I, I was gonna say one thing. Correct me if I'm wrong, I wanna make sure I'm right. In the, if a landowner decides to improve the property. We said that we will waive the taxes on the improvements for fifteen years. Is that correct?
That's what's in the, the existing.
Yes. So in other words, if my property's worth ten thousand dollars and I improve it to a hundred thousand dollars, I might as well have to pay taxes on ninety thousand dollars in fifteen years.
There was a limit.
What's that?
There was a limit of, of the amount.
I thought it was any, I thought it was what was approved, what.
Yeah, approved.
The improvement was. I don't think fifty, I think that's too long.
It is.
We're defeating all the purpose. I'd say maybe five years.
So reduce the years.
Instead of fifteen?
You're gonna get into code.
Pulls straight from the state code.
Oh, really?
The fifteen years.
I guess no less than fifteen.
It says shall be abated for a period of not less than fifteen years.
What the hell's the purpose of doing a reassess?
Well, what I'm saying, yeah, what I'm saying to you is somebody, alright.
I know exactly what you're saying. I agree with you. So if I want, if I was gonna do improvement to my place anyway. I'd say, hey, Kenny, I'm gonna put fifty thousand dollars in my house, and I ain't paying no taxes fifteen years.
Well, let me tell you what I could do. I could let that burnt-up house sit there. Okay?
It was gonna reveal it anyway. Let's say, hey, I want that fifteen years, I'm.
Yeah, y'all tell me to tear the house down.
I see what you're saying.
Y'all tell me to tear the house down, okay? Alright, I'll tear the house down. I'm gonna put another house out. Right there for a ten thousand dollars. That new house will be worth two hundred thousand dollars. I'm gonna pay taxes on that amount for fifteen years.
Just attach it to that same.
And I'm in that position right now. But I can do it.
That makes sense.
So even so, I'm gonna read you what the Dominion Code says, fifteen point two dash nine oh seven point one. It's a long second. The sentence that applies is, uh. Alright, so real estate tax on an amount equal to the cost of demolition or an amount equal to the increase in the fair market value of the renovation. Shall be abated for a period of not less than fifteen years and is transferable with the product.
Alright, so you need to declare yourself blighted. Can you read?
I'm definitely blighted.
I drove by the other day.
Yeah.
So. Yes, this would help you rebuild your property and make it very marketable.
But, but the county's gonna lose.
Well, the county's not gaining.
Well, they don't.
They're losing fifteen years of property.
Yeah, because we was getting taxes on it.
So we'll get the, we'll get the, the land. Cause land's not gonna change soon. You're taxed on your, on your value of your, your real estate, and then taxed on the improvements.
Right.
So we would not be receiving any income on the improvements for fifteen years.
Well, it does say the owner of a building may apply to the locality and request the building be declared derelict. Now, I'm gonna assume that if somebody.
That's part of the process.
Yes, I'm gonna assume that if somebody who's had a house fire comes in and it's pretty clear they're looking for a benefit. They have to apply, and then the county has to make a rule on that. So my assumption would be the county saying, this is, this is why we have this.
This is a blight, blight talking about this is unfortunate.
You treat him different than somebody else?
Well, I mean, I'm just saying.
You'd be, you'd be representing. Now, I don't, I don't like that. I mean, that's just me. I, I think you, the county's defeating the old purpose.
But the state code, we don't, we don't have.
I know, but what I'm saying to you is. It, it just doesn't make sense.
Well, I, I guess if you look long, long shot, in fifteen to twenty years from now, the county will be gaining tremendously.
I won't be playing it.
But you're still, you're still working.
I understand what you're saying, but I, I just.
Really nice question. Ask, ask them like that. Can you see what?
Is the white ordinance part of the abatement program process?
Can you have one knock out?
Catherine said we had to have the abatement first.
Code says you can't have a blight ordinance without doing that.
Okay.
So in essence, what we're really doing is not directing it really, the abatement is, we need the blight ordinance to put teeth in. So these derelict landowners or property owners fix up their property when you have that drug. Orion in that.
And it's always the bad part of, so the, the front of it doesn't help the tax revenue. Makes it look nice, cleans things up.
It's criminal blight.
Helps your, helps your neighborhood, so, so John's house will sell better because he doesn't have a, a birdhouse beside it.
Yeah, right beside me.
And some people, and some people, Dickie, would take the insurance money and would never build it back. And, and in that regard, yeah, something needs to be done about it, but for somebody that will build it back anyway. Now you're getting a fifteen-year incentive that you was gonna do it anyway.
Criminal punishment.
It goes back, well, I understand what I'm saying, but they could call me that day, so.
And I know it affects you, but the original intent of all this really was a blight.
That's right.
I had had like sixteen phone calls in the last week because there was a murder down the road.
Right.
And I'm getting sick just like everybody else is of this drug problem, unless we put teeth in it, this blight ordinance, criminal blight. We're not gonna make any headway.
Well, they just have to move, they, they have to. But we're not taking the guns away from Chicago and city crime rate.
But see, the other thing is, we're still not losing any value in this. Because you're only getting what you're getting right now.
I see what you're saying.
We're just not getting new data.
Right, and then hopefully by cleaning up all this move, move in, you have better, better real estate.
Phil, you're very familiar with all this, and you're quiet as a trash mite over that. What you, what you, what you, what's that heat?
He's never gone to court. We've never gone to court on a blight. We've got one, it is a court. But usually people just, we cut them a deal and say, listen. Here, Ford, you sign this thing over to the town. That's what I usually do. You sign it over to the town, we'll tear it down, we'll bait the asbestos, I'll put it on the market. And if we get all our money back, you'll get whatever's left of it. And that's what I did on mine. And the guy gave us the title to the property, and I didn't have to do a blight enforcement. Really, you can't see the threat of blight enforcement, but simply that letter, it was one of my options. Most people come to you and say, what can I do? And how do I figure this out? And our goal is to stay out of court. If you do this, we'll do this. And we try to break even as best we can. And I haven't had one go to court, but we're going to court on Diller Crawley building. That mess downtown, but I thought it was just kinda neglecting that building down there, and it just won't respond. Hatch windows and give fire frankle system, the roof is leaking and collapsing and all that. So what I find is, very rarely, now you probably have to do it. In expectation of going to court, but most people don't want to go to court, cause they got a mess, and they don't wanna lose the property. You figure a way to do it. Now, the beauty to the town, we own a track house. And we own a ladder, and we own dump trucks, and I can do that pretty easily. County doesn't own all that kinda stuff, so you gotta bid all that out. I can do it relatively inexpensively, get landfill charges and things like that.
We, we, y'all gotta, uh, excavate, we got a great big bulldozer that kinda landfill.
Well, where, where am I though?
Uh, so correct me if I'm wrong, we, in, in those, uh, RFPs or stuff like that.
We can actually piggyback off a state contract and do it one time.
Yeah, I mean, to find a contractor?
Yeah, to find a contractor.
You can do that, but you're gonna find it just to be. What did, uh, Bill Clinton say about abortion? Infrequent, safe, and, and that kinda thing. You're not gonna find yourself tearing very many damn.
That's right.
Most people, when they find out, if they gotta carry the stuff to the landfill, and they gotta do the asbestos report. If y'all stick to that, most people are cleaning this up, so, cause they don't wanna take twenty thousand dollars out of you.
But going back to Dickie's, the, of the, of the fifteen year abatement, he was gonna build it back anyway. So now he just wait on the letter.
If you're building for the full amount of improvements, Gary, I don't, I don't.
It's a baby for the full amount of improvements.
Is it a percentage of improvements or is it what?
Well, I'm, I'm reading the state. Uh, yeah, I'm reading the state code section right now. And, and just to, to read it aloud, uh. It says, on the building permit application, the owner shall declare the cost of demolition or the cost of materials and labor to complete the renovation. At the request of the property owner, after demolition or renovation of the derelict building. The real estate assessor shall reflect the fair market value of the demolition cost or the fair market value of the renovation improvements. And reflect such value in the real estate tax assessment records. The real estate tax on an amount equal to the cost of demolition or an amount equal to the increase in the fair market value of the renovation. Shall be abated for a period of not less than fifteen years.
It says it, 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 it proven, what other improvement, or the demolition, demolition.
Well, it seems to me.
Demolition is far less expensive.
Yeah, so when the county is gonna wanna do is the county's gonna wanna go with the cost of demolition. Yeah, so.
Then you're subtracting that from the land value for fifteen.
He's just put a lien on the property.
But if it just, if a person tears it down and leaves it, that's what he's speaking of, but if he tears it down and builds a new one now, then that's the improvement.
No, it's or, it's demolition or the improvements, right?
Right.
But the demolition says.
Yeah, so, so the way that, the way the state code is written and the, the ordinance that we're drafting for the county mirror state code, is you get your pick. So the cost of demolitions can be way lower.
Yes.
Than the value.
So if it's twenty thousand dollars a demolition and compared to two hundred thousand dollar home. So you're abatement for twenty thousand dollars fifteen years, when in that case it's all.
Well, that makes a more, a whole lot more sense than what I read in the beginning.
It does. So that's all.
Either or. County can say, all right, we're taking it.
All right, we ready to move forward with this thing? Yeah, yeah.
And don't forget one thing, if it's in the country, it's fire bottom burn.
That's right.
Yeah.
Some of them would do their trainings on those.
If it ain't close to another structure or power line, we can greatly reduce the cost of everything but burn everything.
Just to be clear too, because Dickie, this is, this is to hone in, uh, part C of the county ordinance says the same thing. It says, real estate tax on an amount equal to the cost of demolition or an amount equal to the increase in fair market value shall be abated. So I think we're good.
Yes.
So we've got the.
Your kitchen caught on fire. You went back and fixed your kitchen.
Right.
That fifteen years of tax on that new kitchen wouldn't give me.
Yeah. This is, that's actually good. I mean, you think about out of pocket where people end up paying, because insurance doesn't pay a hundred percent.
No.
What about being. What they get, get out of pocket, you know, it's. Yeah, what about what we discussed on it, on the agricultural side? So we had talked about it last meeting, Gary, if you're riding down a country road, like on my road, and it's a big tract, Timber been cutting this old house, sitting there, you ain't know it's there, that thing been vacant for fifty years. County should have no control over telling people to push it out of there. But I mean, we're talking complaint based stuff. Well, somebody gonna complain. Somebody that has a complaint put on them is gonna put some complaints out.
Well, see, that's what.
That's what I did.
That's what, one of the phone calls I got about it, that was their, that was their, uh, concern.
If they got one complaint, they're gonna put fifty.
And the other, and the other thing he said was, you know, well, suppose I write about it and say, I'm gonna, I'm gonna complain about that, which is gonna keep that guy from saying, well, I'm gonna complain about the way he got.
And you don't blame him?
No, I mean, you know.
Well, we only have so much staff. And we can only. That was more of two, how much more staff y'all gonna have to get all this stuff? I think you look at this as triage. I mean, who, who's gonna worry about an old building when you've got meth heads? I mean, to me, that triage is pretty cool. You know, different folks, different joke. Somebody gonna say, you complaining on me and I have to fix this and ain't nobody need it. You don't fix it no way. Tell them good, I can like children. You can tell them all you want to tell them, but I'm saying, hey, so you ain't gonna do that, the DM ain't gonna do it to me?
As long as, mind though, where would it stand in court law if you got teeth to equally derelict?
Some, someone has gotta be drawing file at the end, and I know that ain't the right terminology, Gary, but somewhere if that thing has been vacant more than so many years, it's considered not only vacant, it's, uh, what's the hell we're looking for?
Unlivable.
Derelict.
Derelict, it go oil.
So, so. So going on that point, I'm, I'm still looking at state code here. It says, it defines a derelict building. It says it defines it as a residential or non-residential building or structure, whether or not construction has been completed. You know, and to me, this is kinda, I, I always wonder about this next part where it says, that might endanger the public's health, safety, or welfare. Well, if it's on private land, it's not open to the public anyway. And so it's not a, there's no risk to the public.
But yeah, it's a meth house.
But.
You've got the criminal.
Around the corner of my house, I was told the other night that there have been some activities in that house. And it's unadcont.
Yeah.
It's derelict, the power not on, which is going off on that. So the public has access to that unsecured home.
Well, I mean, I would say that, that creates a situation in that particular instance where it's arguable than it is.
Yeah. They have access, but they ain't supposed to if it's private.
Correct, but the owner's not secured. The owner's, the owner's negligence from not hosting and securing the doors and windows.
We got another situation, um, when the neighbors complained and, and, and we're working on that now, but, uh, there's a trailer just sitting there with no electricity, no sewage, and the sewage is dumping on the ground, going towards creek. That's public safety.
Yes, absolutely.
So that's, that's stuff that's.
And that was.
Yeah, they get it by a mountain.
And that was a complaint that I got personally the other day after, after the form here. Couple citizens asked me about this, what we were doing.
Well, it seems. Well, it seems to me like the state code gives us almost a case by case basis explanation of this. So I mean, I'm. Well, we need something written because it said either residential or non-residential. So you could say that falls to that old tobacco bond your great granddad had, or we, I know that'd be something, because kids get the plan in that thing, they, if they fall on top of. If they posted no trespassing sign. Is there, Norfolk and Southern had no trespassing sign when the kids got killed on that river and they came back with a big lawsuit anymore. Well, I read. You remember that? Yep, you're right. It was terrible, terrible tragedy, I'm glad. But that's how, you know, how it law is.
Well, I don't, I mean, look, I don't think the county would have any liability if somebody got hurt in a derelict building.
All right.
That's not, I mean, that's not the county's domain. That's, that's a private land.
We receive a complaint, we don't take action and somebody gets hurt.
Then, then you allow. If you got this, if you adopted this ordinance here, and six months ago, I got a letter where I sent the administrator saying about this house and never, nothing was done, and some kids was over there in that house felling, and why won't nothing done?
I don't know. I mean, to me, it looks like you get a complaint. I mean, the county has to assess it, and just because you get a complaint doesn't necessarily mean it's derelict built. You like to bite on a building that's not derelict, I mean, that's.
Plan goes out, then notice goes out, they've got ninety days or thirty, there were some days in there about them returning with a plan. So I mean, it's.
You know, localities in Virginia have a lot of judgment, um, and, and courts grant them a lot of leeway. There's a really famous case out of Rock Ridge County that I always think about where a guy up there wanted to put in a game hunting preserve, he wanted to have bird hunting. And y'all probably know that's the biggest poultry producing county in the country. And all the poultry farmers came out and they said, we can't have this.
Right.
And, and the county had like a dozen experts who came in and said, it is an absolute impossibility that the, this poultry could get infected with any disease from these game birds, not possible. And the county said, we don't care what you say, uh, you know, we're gonna ban it because we're not, not risking it. And they sued in court. What the court said is, you know, on issues where a county's making a judgment call, they're granting leeway. So I sort of view it the same way here. I mean, if a county says, you know, just because a landowner says it's a derelict building, the county might not say it's a derelict. We, we've got some discretion there, so.
So the main thing is, is we can't ever just ignore a complaint.
Right.
They have to be investigated.
I, you, Bill and I had talked about ways of making it to where these old tobacco buildings or something that looks really good in your fall. Oh, I said that, and, and he agreed, got the lead, the foliage beside it, makes a really good painting picture. It's been vacant for fifty years or not used forever, how many years? We talked about Schedule F taxes. But then I went thinking, I said, you know, it's some people that get by with farm use and they don't have to file a Schedule F. But if that land is land use under agriculture, then maybe that's something we should put in our code that it's excluded from it, that the land is in land use, agriculture use. Also, could you, could you exclude ag buildings? That would be in land use.
Yeah.
Yeah.
May or may not be in the land use, because we only have open land.
That's right, you can only have open land for land use.
Yeah, no, it proves it, that's right, you're right. But if that open land is in land use in that building situation where that opened another whole.
Hang a sign on it, say chicken coop.
If the land is actively farmed.
Well, I mean, look at them, I, I'm, you know, going back and stick that. And y'all raising issues that, that I hadn't thought about, so it's good.
That's what we like to do.
Yeah.
Money to war.
Yeah, yeah, I, I would just read you again. It says, the building qualifies as a derelict building pursuant to the ordinance, the locality shall notify the owner of the derelict building and that the owner is required to submit to the locality a plan within ninety days to demolish or renovate the building to address items that endanger the public's health, safety, or welfare, so this written notification provided by the county. But it does say demolish or renovate. Now, I was, I actually could say, you know, you could additionally, if it's using your example of the tobacco bar, I mean, I would think that if the landowner says, well, I'm gonna put up a fence around it, put a no trespassing sign, that way the public shouldn't be coming in. And code does say demolish or renovate, so.
So if we exclude them type of buildings altogether, and listen, you just read that, what I heard was you said, within ninety days.
Gotta submit the plan.
They gotta submit the plan, well, that, what does that mean? Their, their plan is within ten years, I'm gonna donate to, to the Blackstone Fire Department to burn it down. Is that acceptable? That's their plan?
Then we can go back and, and say whether or not it's, so, yeah. Which again, it takes, it takes more time for the county, yeah.
Yeah. We gotta, we gotta think into that a little bit. I do think it's a really good deal for the county and the adjacent property owners to clean some neighborhoods up, especially for the criminal blight. But we gotta consider these old buildings, are they derelict buildings? If they got no trespass, Gary, I like the idea of the fence, but I don't think that's practical, that costs money. I like no trespassing sign. Yeah. Well, Gary, let me ask you this too, um, any of these ordinance, aren't they pretty fluid that we can amend them?
You can amend them as long as they still comply with state.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah. I mean, what, what we put together for the county in this case, just basically just regurgitate what state code is.
Right.
And there's a lot of.
So, so no trespass sign on a place where a landowner found some illegal activity, he's then able to call the sheriff and say, they're trespassing again. Trouspassing again, so then that gets those people that we want, but it doesn't remove the attractive nuisance for the, for the criminal element.
This is probably one of the many laws we have in our state code that were drafted by people who don't live in a rural area.
Exactly.
You got it.
That's exactly right.
And that's, that's, that's unfortunately what a lot of our state code is.
That's why we gotta have some exemptions. We gotta speak about some exemptions. Who, who, what property owns that exemption? You know, even, it ain't, it ain't gotta be old farmer or big landowner, they might have five acres of old tobacco bond that they granted ahead that they don't want that to go nowhere.
Would you, you're, you're, you're reading out of Title Thirty Six. Is that what the spot blight abatement policy is?
Yeah, I'm reading, I'm, the code section I'm reading from correctly is fifteen point two dash nine oh seven point one.
You said something about the, the increasing the taxes, you said something earlier in the week, or ten days ago? The country, did Audrey say something?
That was on the criminal, right? That was a criminal blight, in- increasing the real estate tax, penalizing somebody again?
That's in the code.
Yeah, I remember reading. I guess my question is, what, how do we get off of, uh, X, Y, and get to Z, and get this thing done? Uh, my same question. And make it doable and, and, and try to make the. That's a ticket.
I mean, I think we're all.
Make it doable in a good place.
Yeah, I think, I think what Gary said, the county has a lot of leeway. So if, if somebody comes and says, well, that old tobacco barn, I don't like the way it looks, I got anything to do with. Science is nothing.
That's right.
You gotta prove it's, it's some kind of hazard to the, you know, to the public or a drug hazard or whatever, you know. To me, I think we got a lot of leeway in, in those things like that, but I would think, you know, I got two old tobacco bars, and if somebody comes by and says, well, I don't like the looks of that barn, I'm gonna say, nothing wrong with that barn.
Tell them no look over there.
Exactly.
Well, it was, it was more to my attention that this blight ordinance in Blackstone, a land on a, uh, was notified and so he sent some men up here to put plywood over the way, which he said, but don't you agree that they look a lot worse? I said, yeah, it looks a whole lot worse, but it keeps anybody from going in there to get hurt. Cause that's the whole idea of it, didn't have no way to do that.
But it still should be.
But it looks terrible.
Yeah, it still should be in that ninety day plan of, of, of a timeline to do.
The plan of ninety days was, he said, he gonna, he gonna set it to his life. So he asked the ninety day.
Yeah.
Make it specific to expose structural element.
We had talked about that deal.
Correct, but ours also doesn't have the language in there talking about us taking the property.
Right.
Well, that's just a negotiation. You don't take, you just say, well, we'll knock it down and.
I've got the equipment, so.
I'll take care of your problem and.
We'll get rid of the problem and everybody's gonna be friends and we all go to court and.
We all basically eminent domain, right?
Ours goes to eminent domain and only case that we've had that's been contested to the point of going to court is an eminent domain, he just won't respond, so November twenty second will be in court.
So they negotiate a, a resolution after sending the letter.
The problem people run into, and I can tell you, I, I do, uh, town of Farmville has a number of these things. A lot of times, what you'll run into is the air property, so you don't.
Oh, yeah, this is gonna have fourteen.
So you don't really actually have an actual person to deal with because they don't have any authority. You got, you got a blight, you don't, it's owned by seventy people.
It's a contact, so it's a contact of record for Commissioner Avenue and that's where the letter goes.
Look, you may ask this, somebody, if you get a situation where somebody says, well, Phil, I'm financially not able to, to fix that.
Well, that's the beauty of the town of Blackstone's opportunity, we own.
Well, wait a minute, let me, let me give you a second answer to that. And they got a mortgage on the play.
And they got a mortgage on it?
That's right.
I am, we, here's how we handled one of those in West, I got a private developer to that.
So you're still working deals to make everybody happy?
And it's wrapped about the house next to slip in.
Well, the way, the way I play it, I, I didn't, I deal with these all the time. Take that situation, you gotta, you gotta derelict property and you gotta demolish it. Or, you know, usually what you do is you notify the owner, give them an opportunity to fix it up, they don't do it, you demolish it. What I always say, what you need to do, it's not in the code that you have to do this, but it's a good practice to petition the circuit court in the county where the property is located. And what you do then is you give notice to any lien holder, whether it's a bank or whether it's somebody that's got a judgment against the property, and then you get a circuit court judge to sign off on it. And.
And free.
Correct, and if you give a notice to that lien holder, whether it's a bank or a judgment holder, they've had an opportunity to come forward, they've had an opportunity to voice their concern, you got a circuit court order and you go with it. So I, I mean, I would say if the county's gonna do this, I mean, it's the reality of it is, I'm, I'm gonna, yes, it's not gonna be done on a real widespread scale. You know, I mean, it usually is not, it's not gonna be too much of a headache to go and get a circuit court judge to sign off on it. And so for every one of these, you're probably gonna end up wanting to do a title search along with it, just to make sure that we got the right owner identified and we've been communicating with the right person.
Well, and, and, and I get it, and I get about the complaints and everything, but I, I think every one of us has stated to the people that we talk to in the public, we've stated it needs to be, the main goal for this is to help take care of this criminal element not only county. I don't give a damn how many tobacco bars is out there, the people complaining about it, as long as it ain't a meth head.
Right.
Yeah, we got a couple, we got a couple with product. I would love to get to the point where that was the problem, but.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, 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 that was all the problem, it would be a good problem.
Definitely.
Right, but we got a couple places in the county that don't look good at halfable, it really don't, the people do it. And I ain't so sure, well, but maybe they are doing some, I don't, I don't know that they are, but, you know.
You think more relic with dark stuff?
No, they might be looking for sprite. I don't know, we just need, we, we definitely need to be someone, it is some, some, we are citizens that's very concerned about that.
Oh, yeah, on both sides.
On both sides, yeah. So how do we get the, and.
How do we get to that Z?
Yeah.
Like you're talking about, how do we get to that Z?
I feel like we hung on X and Y right now, just get to Z, get this thing adopted, and I mean, sometimes you just gotta put something in effect and let the folks see, okay, this ain't going there, this is going here, you know, sometimes the, the visual effect is what you get, whether it's like what you see in the town of Blackstone. Right, and the deal make it happen to change it up. I mean, we can do that, we got, we got.
Put it in effect, excuse me, this term, put it in effect and then amend it if we have to.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it, it, our, our end is fluid, yeah.
And get it in place, so we have some deed.
Yeah. And do we need to go to a public hearing about this?
Didn't we do it?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, we did.
I mean, have we, do, are we past the time expectation when we need to have another public hearing?
No.
Okay.
We haven't changed it. Yeah, we just had a public hearing last month.
I would say, let's put this in a.
If the ordinance has.
Yeah.
Next week, and we're good to go.
All right, so put it on, put it on agenda to vote on?
Yeah.
And then we can make amendment to that Z.
Yeah, we need to, you can amend it down the road or you can even repeal it down the road, it's up to you.
All right.
I know.
All right, there are people office relocation. Uh, Mr. Chairman, it's in your package, uh, so you see the RFP that was sent out, um, October first, uh, for the submission of the, and October ninth, we received something from the Blackstone Town Manager Philip Van Obeckel in Quanah. Um, I did, the, the pictures you see was, uh, a person called me to meet and crew, um, um, this gentleman, uh, and I forget if it said Mr. Wilkson, um, but he didn't, we didn't get anything in writing, in other words, um, you know, it was verbal, you know, it, it is also four thousand square feet, uh, but I didn't get any type of rental rate, back, you know, um, rental rates or a maintenance plan. Um, it, basically his comment was, he was, he was thankful to be able to show us the, the location, and I took pictures while I was in there, and I, and I can quote him on this, he says, Steve, I'm looking to put in a professional organization with a long-term expectation. And, um, that was pretty much his statement to me as far as, uh, the, the area improved. It was a couple of things that, you know, it doesn't have a counter, but, you know, and that kind of thing, and we're not sure about the handicap accessibility in that building neither, but either way, I didn't get a response in the RFP. But we did go ahead and took a peek at it. Well, with that said, um, the, um, just so, some things have changed, I know I put a plan.
the, um, just so, some things have changed, I know I put a plan out for this work session about three, maybe three months ago. Uh, since that time, um, uh, I guess you've read some of the things that's happened at the voter registration. Um, also I found that they got a leak in the school in, in that office, um, that I didn't know about, um, the tile probably does need to be replaced in the floor and, and, in the, in the, in the school if the Virginia's, uh, cooperative extension goes there, which I told the chairman the other day, I didn't get a response, you know, I put a memo away, uh, August fourteenth, to ask them for that space, but nobody getting anything back from that. Um, the bottom line is, the voter, the treasurer needs to leave that area. Um, and, and I think Ms. Norton went to, into Bertha School, and she even said she got choked up and sick because she felt like it was pollen or something, I mean, mildew mold. Okay, but anyway, so that's where we're staying, um, the proposal that, that we did get, if you look at it, um, uh, it meets, it, when I looked, reviewed it and it meets the requirements that I did ask for. Um, I did have Nick to go out there to see if anything that he could think of that thought might could be improved. He mentioned possibly to have some type of life safety plan, um, since we have so much of the public going there in that one area and, and, and having, um, a busy, busy, busy place. But anyway, there's your, it's all written there for you. Um, you got any questions, I, I see the mayor, Ben Green is here tonight as well as Jeff Phillips, town manager. Um, I have not met this, I think the gentleman that owns it is Mr. Rapp, I have not met him personally yet, but, um, but I have met some people who assist him and, and that was Eric Dash. But he's been very gracious to let me go in and out and look at the property and bringing people in to look at the property, see if they would fit our mission.
What was the outcome of the county's?
They, they feel like it would fit them very well. And that's, that's a good point, I, 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 I say this, I'm not, I don't understand the flow, treasurer, I don't, I'm not a commissioner revenue person. I'm not a voter registration, so I brought them there and let them give their input and, and their needs and, um, and they, and they had asked for a couple, uh, altercations, and from my understanding, I have not been back up and out, but, um, that, that, that is, Philip might can have moved that, some of the altercations that they, we've requested, like bigger space for Christie. Hudson alterations, also altercation.
I guess that one.
And, and I think the, it was a couple of, and it.
I remember there were three items that, uh, operation wise to the building, and I think each of the three are addressed in the RFP response first, which was, they'd be included a handicap bathroom.
All right.
It started and it reminded me it wouldn't complete, and so you'll see, uh, in the RFP response, it does say handicap bathroom will be provided. There was a counter request for the, uh, voter registrar.
That's right, keep the public separate there.
Yeah, keep the public separate, I think that is probably two-thirds of the way constructed, to tell you the truth. And, uh, it's not truly a counter, but he had a little wall, uh, that he had, had put in there that he could convert, certainly into that counter. And, uh, I think the third one was, uh, Christie Hudson was interested in a separate and distinct space. Wouldn't require a storefront of some sort, and, uh, I think that also was Mr. Rapp or his representatives who I spoke with are agreeable to doing all three of those items, and I think those are addressed.
And we, and we're still looking at it, I, I know five years can seem like a long time, but it's still, we call it a temporary space.
Is the current spaces where the registrar, the treasurer, and commissioner revenue, are they fully ADA accessible? You know, does the public have access to an ADA compliant mask?
The public does not have a, the treasurer's office, they only have access to a bathroom period. Um, the commissioner revenue, uh, that, no, that's not, not, they're not, uh, Nick, would that be a fair, Nick is in the process of doing assessment up there at the courthouse, um, because we had made him our ADA coordinator, but I'm ninety-nine percent sure that, that the restrooms in the, the restroom in, at the cooperative extensions, that was handicap accessible, but not where the, uh, commissioner revenue is located. Right, it, it is not, and that's not even a bathroom, that's not even a bathroom available to treasurer, I don't think it's nothing. I mean, for public, for public.
But it is at the registrar's office.
That's right. Yes, and that's, and that's handicapped.
Do you have to have a restroom in commissioner revenue office? Apparently you don't, cause it ain't been one that's been public for forty years.
I see, and I think the expectation was the one at the courthouse was meant for public, but it's lost. When court's not in session.
But the, 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 uh, extension, the extension is.
That's right.
But they ain't going, if they, if they got some disabilities, they gotta go ahead. The disabilities.
That's right.
You know.
One, one thing that, um, and I mean, just, I, and you, you can read it yourself, but it, one thing that I think that was a really advantage of the, the old BBNT bank is that people can pay their taxes and not get in the car, they, they, I think that was another thing, they actually fixed the drive-through.
Yes.
And, and, and I didn't, and, and they also have a night deposit box that goes into a safe, and the safe is already there.
There's actually a few safes.
It's like four.
It's like four, five, yeah, right, I mean, if there's one walk-in vault, that's where we will put the voting machines and they will fit in there.
There was a, there was a recent report of security at registrar's office. How does this address that?
Well, uh, yeah, yeah, well, that's a, that's a good question, so, um, one thing that we will have to do that I, that I think there needs to be an improvement on, we need, and I think Ms. Norton had brought it up before, but I don't like to talk to the public too much, but we need to prove on cameras. Um, but one thing that's, um, is also an advantage, I feel like it's a, some people might not feel that way, but I feel like it's, uh, the police station is like right there and right in front of them. Yes, the camera's there.
Almost like the sheriff's all the right next door.
But I, but I still lock my door. We still lock our door.
Is there a alarm system in that building?
It, it, the treasurer, the treasurer has, she used to have.
I'm talking about Hoedler.
Oh, I don't know.
I'm sure they.
I, I feel they had one at one time, but I don't know whether it's.
Mr. Chairman, I'm pointing out too, that, um, Philip is offered the police department escort with cash, cash over to the bank and, and a close proximity to our D and B select.
I, I, I say, I think right now that, that, the two things that concerns, this concerns the, concerns me about them conversations is Christie, that Christie and the circuit court clerk, they'll have to do a little traveling between, I mean, it's gonna be Christie traveling to talk to Jane. Um, the treasurer, of course, commission, they're right there, and the other one, some people concerned about whether the post office will close because we will lose a lot of mail, and I don't see no need to worry about that right now, but, um, it, it's just we got, we call it temporary for five years, but people are concerned about the post office.
Well, I would think that.
And I don't even know how much mail travels, I'm just speaking.
Well, I, you know, the post office in Nottaway has a lot of mail.
They do have a lot.
And they have, it's county mail, and I would kind of hint to the people moving, uh, could you continue to mail your?
They seem, and they seem like they're willing to.
I, I think that would be.
They're gonna be traveling to the courthouse.
So the mail goes, still goes to Nottaway courthouse?
I, I.
To protect that postal.
Like I said, all my mail goes out of Nottaway. I don't put it in the town if I go to Nottaway. We got a good lady running that post office.
Right, and that's, that's, you're her biggest customer.
Yep.
The, what I'm really concerned about right now is that, you know, these rains that are happening in Florida and that kind of thing. Um, we have spent a lot on one of the treasurers and, and, and we've done a lot of cleanup, and if we have another, in, in the, the, that, that workforce down there has complained over and over that they, they stopped up, they feel sick, and then we got public walking in, they paying the taxes. Uh, like Dicky said before me started, they're not happy when they walk in there, but if they start breathing mold and mildew, then it will be more than happy. Um, I, I, it's hard for me to understand it because I'm less sensitive than other people, but some people.
It is, it's individual.
It's individual, they're not, and so I have to be, you know, um, to understand that.
All right, do we have a total cost, because, I mean, you're talking over a quarter million dollars just for the five years in rent, and then you've got the move and then the, oh.
Well, that was another thing too, so, so people have asked me to give, call, call, uh, competitive, cost embarrassment, okay, it'd be hard to do it. Yeah, we, y'all attended the work session, the joint work session in the school. I had Andrea look it up, I said, Andrea, we, we don't do the minutes, just listen to the, listen to the, the work session, the joint work session. Five times, four or five times, the school board representative or one of the staff said, be looking for going up in rent at the school, they said, Bob, she's got to document it, you list it. I don't know what that, what's gonna be, and if we move to Virginia cooperative extension now, what is it gonna be? Um, we paid four, five thousand dollars, I think we'll pay, we probably pay four thousand bucks this year, I expect it'll be about six thousand, you know, now, and so that's, that's it, and it's charged that as a percentage, but we're talking about going up, going up to what, twenty thousand? So if you're going twenty thousand, that's half the.
Yeah, that would be for that only one office. The main thing you gotta focus on is safety of the workers in there and the security breach that they had at the elementary school. Whose fault was that? Well, the, the school owns it, we rented it, the landowner's doing it responsible, but if the problem's not fixed immediately, that could be a big problem, and I think the problem wasn't fixed immediately. Um, Philip said that, you know, he had said somebody calls to the move, he had said it's the town of Blackstone, must may have would even assisted in that. So I, I think they're thinking long-term of getting it there, I mean, it's a short-term fix for five years, but they're willing to help us help them. You know, cause it's gonna give them a little more tax revenue, and it's gonna put our people in a much better position as, as a work atmosphere for a little while until we can get something ironed out. One thing I hate to see is, and I may not be here tomorrow, much less five years from now, is things getting away from Nottaway, because if you got a county seat, county seats is where the business takes place. Generally speaking, that's where your taxes are done, that's where your, even the voter registrar should be here, used to be here. And you let them little officers start going like this right here, you don't want them to got a county seat. I heard one person say you build a circuit court, it ain't gonna be right here, you can build it on another side of the county. Doesn't wanna go over the whole court, that is, oh yeah. But then you let it fall apart, and a lot of that's got a lot to do with history. You know, we, we need to come here and do something, but we gotta have a fix now.
Right, and I, in my brain and, and, and the staff, we, we won't, but officially, in, in, in Gary, in that, him and I have had a conversation, this judge, judge can make us, I say may, can require us to do something with the courthouse to meet their needs, am I correct, William? That is common, and I, and they've already got, I'm just letting y'all know that the judge has got a lawyer, and the lawyer, the appointed lawyer is going around and doing an assessment on what we have. Um, i- if I do move, if we do have to do something to the courthouse, I'm gonna have to move people anyway. I'm gonna have to move somebody, and I've had people say, what, put a trailer up, put it where? I don't, where do I want to put it? In the way? I don't know.
The trailers cost a lot of money. And also in that proposal from, uh, what's, what's, uh, Rep. Representative, who, it won't, Eric, who's the other fellow that, hold on, hold on. They was gonna pay the utilities, and somebody said utilities that currently paying is off the hook.
It's the finanista.
Are you telling me Blackstone utilities are hot?
No, the ones we pay seventeen hundred dollars a month for, on one office now, Blackstone, you definitely make it money.
But this rental contract, it's water, sewer, and electric.
They said it does, Chris, the owner is offering to Nottaway County, the space of forty-five, space for forty-five hundred dollars monthly, which includes utilities, utilities of the finance, water, sewers, and electricity.
And Steve, I'm gonna interject, cause all of us had a chance to go and do this thing. It meets the compliance issues, the safety issues, and at the end of the day, we owe every, whether they're a constitutional officer or not, we owe every employee of this county a safe work environment, and if we don't get up our butt and do something, we're gonna get sued. We need to do this because it's the only, and it's not pitting one community against the other, I've had people call me and raise hell because it's not in the middle of the county. Well, this building fits the bill. It provides an environment and services for the people we never had, drive-through, safe, all three constitutional officers are granted. The rent includes water, sewer, electric, and like Steve said, the judge, he's gonna come down the pipe, suppose five months from now, we, we don't take this opportunity, and that building gets rented to somebody else, where we gonna put everybody?
First off, that building would never be ready, my guess, to somebody else for less than, would he pay for it, Philip, six, six hundred five?
I don't know exactly.
Whatever it was, you go ten percent, so if it's five hundred thousand, it'd be five, yeah, at least five thousand, with I G U T. I mean, we need to do something, it needs to be understood, it is temporary.
Well, let me ask you this, is, is this ready to be adopted? The, the, uh, RFP, is it ready to be adopted?
Well, I would agree to it.
No, no, what I, what I need permission from the board is to sign the lease agreement for five year. That's what.
We gotta vote on that next week.
Right, that's right.
We can't do it tonight.
But if you're saying, yeah, everybody, I mean, we got.
No, if everybody kind of agrees here, then it's all just sign the lease, appropriate the funds.
We ain't acquiring nothing, the county's not acquiring, we're renting. It's no different than renting a tank, I think I ain't gonna put the.
We have to appropriate the funds, bub.
Right.
From January first of June.
Well, and we're kind of.
He said just give me the authority.
I said, I, I, I'm fine with that, I, I'll say give Steve the authority to sign the lease. Y'all?
Yeah. I think people need to look at.
We just give a consensus name.
Let me, let me, let me go next week.
Okay.
We're gonna make sure that, there's, I don't, there's no concern I have over giving county administrator the authority to sign the lease. The only thing I would think of where a public hearing could come into play, I mean, the way that this is, you're relocating constitutional office.
Under the code of Virginia, I read it.
No, no public hearing required.
No public hearing required for a lease, it says that it's a lot of leeway for us. Ideally, everybody stays at the complex, but that is not possible. Another location within the locality is fine.
And so let me rephrase, I'm gonna clarify something, and I want to say it again, I, Mr. Rapp, and I, no, nothing has been done to stop being transparent, Mr. Rapp has not offered me a lease, I haven't seen a lease. And so I guess the first step would be for me to respond back to, um, Philip to say, would you ask Mr. Rapp to give you a, a, like sample lease that matches the proposal?
Right.
Yeah, and Gary needs to look at it too, because if we decide to vacate that thing in three years, are we responding for that two years, depending on where it leaves? Right?
Well, if he's on a five-year lease, he'll hook five.
Yes, somewhat.
All right, so Bo, would you, would you be better off to a three-year lease with two optional additional years?
I was gonna go five with the option of that. Well, that's what I originally said. And I don't want the complex down there, but when you wanna, if you're gonna need something rather than throwing money away to a rental, to a landlord, wouldn't you at least have the option?
Would they allow the money to, part of the rent to go towards that purchase?
I'm not in favor of that, and the reason I'm, I'm, I'm going back to what Bo said before. He, this is the county seat.
Yeah.
And it's centrally located, it's been here forever.
I agree.
And eventually, something's gotta be built here.
Well, that was my next point, cause I was gonna say, how, we need to get, um, and I'm talking the next quarter, uh, in here and start hammering out a plan for construction, I mean, what are we doing? We can't just keep plugging people around, because next thing you know, your coffers are empty because you're plugging people, paying rent.
We took a tour of the school. I, I think we need to take a, a tour of at least four county courtes, county seat, and look what they've done to renovate and protect it.
Before we start.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Before we even hire an architect.
I just, I just need.
Make that a work session.
Eventually, we're gonna have to do something, and we've got some property here, it's, it's complex, it's, it's vacant. You got a, a, a lot between the end of the, uh.
Sheriff's office and the Wilson.
Right, and, and you've got, and.
Pulling place.
It's gonna be going up too. So you got several things that, that we gotta look at, but in the meantime, to me, this is the only alternative we got. I, I just don't see us.
But we can do it very feasible. I don't think we gotta spend twenty million, I'm just gonna. Right there where the commissioner revenue's office is, that's, that's chicken check, sheriff's office is chicken check. You can boot those, add on to the circuit court, it's already there, and put some offices in there, and you can do it for a fraction of this twenty-eight dollars that anybody told.
Well, you got, like I said, you got a vacant lot up, I used to teach, Gary, someone's about, I said, why don't y'all go ahead and build that courthouse right there? Got that vacant lot next to the, uh, uh.
We could rent that, somebody put hogs on.
Definitely.
He'll break out of me.
You can do the ad revolting, you can put the hogs under the soul.
What you mentioned?
Oh, somebody's gonna be calling you, David.
Hey guys, we, we do need to take off though, but, um.
So we're in agreement, we're in agreement with that. Providing this, that, that Mr. Elders needs to look.
Providing this, that, that Mr. Elman gets the lease and looks at all of it.
Well, uh, well, wait a minute, open, we ain't gonna be paying for rent until it's completely renovated.
Right. But he's saying that if we do agree to do this, he'll have it ready. January one. But, but a bright person can go in there.
Yeah, I need, I need that, I need that, and he's allowed that, but I said, I'm not gonna do anything to this board of size.
So we have access to do what we need to do to be ready for that. But the rents, the rents aren't.
Bright has to have access.
And that, that, the IT person said that, yes, and tested, Mr. Norton, and tested.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you for responding to the RFP, I appreciate it. All right, ongoing litigation. Oh, Mr. Chairman, you, we, you and I had a brief conversation yesterday, um, and during that conversation, uh, you, we had mentioned maybe some free, free litigation, things that we've been dealing with. Some of that is in there, so I got two, and I, and I gotta be careful what I say in open meeting, and maybe this is something that. I'm asking, can we go in closed session, Thursday night with Gary, and, and this is gonna sound like an odd request, I'm asking a lawyer to call another lawyer. Um. We, we got a third litigation that's going on, the reason why I haven't been involved in what's happening with that is because it's going to the insurance company, Bay Court. And they put a, gave them a lawyer, uh, pulled that, evidently, there, there are some things that have transpired here recently, and I appreciate you giving me a call yesterday, because maybe made us dip ahead and do it. Um, so I, without saying a whole lot, I'm, I'm gonna.
Put it on closed session for Thursday night.
Thursday night, pretty much, okay, so you can, and I'm asking, was okay if Gary can call the Bay Court lawyer and, you know, uh, bring y'all to speed of what's happening.
Right.
But anyway, just note that some of the stuff that Sanz Anderson kept going, but, um, it was kinda hard to buy that with Gary, so, and he's not familiar with some of that.
Right.
But anyway, that's all for that.
All right, we'll take care of that Thursday night.
Uh, well, I'll do that, this is a matter of time, I'll do that Thursday night, I have a pretty good update on that. Um, the MOU cares donations, uh, Mr. Gary and I talked today, he's gonna work on, basically what the, the cares group is looking for. Is, and Miss Norton had brought this, had brought this up before, is making sure that all the funds they've given us is put earmarked for. The, uh, animal shelter, and so he's, he's going to work on the MOU for that. Um, and landfill fees, so that's a new package, it's, I think it's the last, next to last one. Um, landfill fees, convenience hours is what you can look at.
Right.
Um. The, the quick and easy one, get, get, uh, board is, is just to do away with Sunday, if you do away with Sunday. And you open up every other day, plus Friday and Saturday, for, uh, twelve hours. Basically, the total hours that you have now is forty two point five, the way we're set up, if we make that change, it's forty eight hours. It, it, so in other words, you're adding, um, five point five hours gonna matter, right?
And what days are you open?
You open Monday.
Through sex, through Friday.
Mon, no, no, you open Monday, you close Tuesday, Thursday, on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, and Saturday. But every day is twelve hours.
Wait a minute, so. Current and proposed.
Current is now, right.
Yeah.
So, so y'all said you want to expand it.
Current is now.
Yeah, it current is.
I was, I was. For clarification.
It's been a long night.
Is this what we received back from the staff?
Yeah, this is what me and Gary, just three of us, just brainstorming.
What were their thoughts about it?
Uh, as no, it's, it's, the, the, the only thing that we're concerned about, and that might be a very question. Can we work employee twelve hours, seven, eight, seven AM to seven PM, but can they have a working lunch?
Can they have working lunch until they're required to have working lunch?
That's what I'm asking.
I'm sure they're required to have.
And if, if that's the problem, then we can't, it's really called, it's caused a problem, y'all, it's, you're better off leaving this practice.
Yeah, part time, most of them are part time.
Yeah, see, see the problem, Gary, is some people leaving to go to work, live in Richmond, the, the dumpster hours is, we're trying to change it so they can drop the trash off. And we're trying to open it up for twelve hour days. But not be, not be too costly to the county and, and then making sure we all label off, so that's, that, that's, that's what we keep running into.
You know what the best thing about this, I guess anybody can get used to anything, but. How do you ever be, I mean, I, I see people go in the road, drag and back a truck, and I say, well, I hope the dump's open today. Cause I don't know if it's open. Cause, I mean. All right, Sundays we open from two to five thirty, y'all, come on down, Mondays we here from eight thirty to six PM, Tuesdays we ain't gonna be here. Wednesdays we here from eight thirty to six PM, just like we all Mondays. Fridays the same thing, Saturday, we open virtually all day, but we close on Sunday. I, I bet you get more trash on a Sunday in the evening than you do three.
What do they have, we open on Sunday?
No, but the proposed is closed, see, proposed is future, current is now.
Right, but so the way we did it was, is basically looking at it every other day, it's closed every other day.
I understand, but, but if that's what the employee want.
No, no, the employees, it's not employee, the employees are happy where they are, I'm sorry, maybe, the employees are happy.
Just like it is.
It came from the citizens who said they can't get trashed, so that's why, I'm, I, all we did was shift shifts to try to make something happen. And then I was concerned about that twelve hour day.
And if it's seven to seven, so that you'd have to guess if. You don't have to guess where they open at seven to seven?
And if you work in Richmond, you'll make it by seven.
We got somebody learning progression anyway.
So you just consider going with the proposed? Hit the twelve hour days?
If, if that meets y'all's needs, I, I, and, and that way, it's gonna cost you, but, you know, just using minimum wage hour time. It's gonna cost you thirty five hundred dollars more a week, so, you know.
Thirty five hundred dollars more a week, increase it to hour.
Look, you got a lot of convenience centers, man, you got people, you, how many convenience centers, five, seven?
I think it's six, and I think it's animal, I think it's times fifty two.
Oh, it's times fifty two, okay, I didn't know. So, so, so before.
Oh, yeah, fifty five, twelve, forty one, times fifty two a week.
Andrew didn't tell me a math, I figured she, I thought she.
She tells you right here in the bottom, see right here? I had to. Can't get your door open there because there's, there's seven AM, they'd like that one over there, probably the other side of Walmart could be open. Food line, so they can go to the.
Staff's okay with that.
Doctor gorgeous?
My concern is the seven being, because it's getting dark, I know they have lights, but I wanna make sure of the safety of the works and that people.
Well, you, the other thing you gonna hear, if you make a change, Sundays closing, Sundays, I mean, I've heard people like to go up there on Sunday evenings, they have church and people, so. It's almost like you can just, what do you wanna do, open up every day? I mean, and just get more staff, and then you can't, because they gotta, they gotta run, they gotta run the dumpsters and the unpackers and the open top.
That's the minimum, no need to make the check. That's the job I want, when I retire. So if you took, took.
But they watching you, because.
If you went seven to six, it still had four hours on Sunday. Two and a half hours on Sunday.
But, but, but can I say, yeah, but can I say something about that on Sunday? I, I'll say that about Sunday. I've never like, I, I've done a lot of scheduling, power plant, Pete Mark, Mark McCrea. I've never asked any employee to come to work on a scheduled time and only earn three and, three hours or three and a half hours. I think that's, I think that's ridiculous, ain't worth driving to work.
Yeah, I understand.
Right, I've never seen anything like, when I saw it, I went, man, I would not.
But you know what Pop would say today?
What?
He said, you getting these twelve hour shifts right here, boy, sometimes you gotta take a little bit with the sweep.
Well, he's right.
I don't have the mill. These storms have pushed a bunch of mud.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, let's back up one more time real quick, if we could. Um, if we're gonna make a change, should, should we consider?
That it probably be part of it?
Well, well, yeah, but not only that. Should we also consider the closing?
Oh, yeah, we've been considering that since January.
I mean, if we're gonna make the change, but let's, let's shock them all at once, I mean, it's.
Instead of dragging. Yeah, okay, but then, see, that changed the money.
There you go.
And, and I tell you something else.
It's four thousand dollars a month.
This forty eight hour, you can pay time and age. Pay time and age.
But they're all part time.
They're all, they're not getting. Oh, so all on the thumb.
Is it all part time? All part time, okay.
So you guys, that one at Genito is the, the, the worst, I mean, I, I think hands down, you, you close it, but it's gonna save you four thousand dollars a year right there, because that's the rent on it.
Do we have to do that publicly?
Mm-mm, no, we can, we can shut that down.
Well, and what's the other one? Three, I will say I take my trash on a Sunday, even as many times where I've got to wait to back it. I know you didn't.
Oh, really?
So the thing at one fifty three, you know, closest place is the stock guy, right?
Right, so, but, all right, but think about this, back to what Steve was saying, if you, if you gonna work, give them half a day, what is your hour? Go four hours, because you gonna save this additional money up here if you close Genito.
Right. You can make it two to six.
That's right, two to six, four to twelve, whatever you gonna do, just give them a four hour window on Sunday.
Yeah, I think you made two to six on Sunday.
Y'all wanna pull a trailer, you wanna save that money up there at Genito, because I mean, that, what little trash is going right there, you come right to seven twenty three, no problem, even Gary.
Close the proximity. I'd say, yeah, but hold off on, on, on one fifty three for a while.
Yeah, no, that's the second lowest use, that's the only reason why I'm mentioning.
Is it second lowest use? I think I, I think I, I think it's money, but I'm not sure, but I think a lease runs up at the end of the year.
No, we did, they did senior lease. Yeah, Genito, yeah, but it was never an option about?
No, it wasn't.
But we could pull out of the contract at any time with, with notice, notification, so that's four thousand dollars. So we could, we could extend this to like, like you said, two to, two to six, one to, one to five, two to four on Sunday, give them a solid four hours. And then stay, stay.
Close that one in, still save money.
There you go.
Why don't we consider doing that?
I'm good with it.
I'm good with it.
And you stay seven to seven with the.
I blew my brain out, all right, so.
Sunday's gonna stay up.
Sunday's stay open. And other ones will be seven to seven.
Seven to seven, it's closed in a though.
Yep.
But we'll kinda notice you, you January one, if we open to January.
You were saying thirty days or sixty days. It, it's, it was, it was, it was an easing out, I'm worried about, I'm worried about employee hours, I just don't.
You can just get you a scratch piece, maybe you can say that, eh?
No, I mean, the legal calibre behind it.
They're sitting there for twelve hours, now maybe. Well, they all part time, so that. Maybe they, maybe they don't, Steve, they don't work twelve hours.
Well, see, that's what I suggested to them.
Somebody works. Seven to. Talk to them and see what they, I said, would you rather work twelve hour shift less days?
That's right.
Or would you rather work two, two six hour shifts rather than one twelve hour?
That's right.
Me, I'd rather you with me twelve hour, you know, but I got to be eight mile.
The only one.
We learned, we had that discussion about lunch, you don't have to give them lunch. You, you're required to give them some kind of time.
But they get a fifteen minute hour.
But no, I think that's what it was, the breaks, the fifteen minute breaks. It was not, it was not a month. Yeah, so the other thing is, if we get in a.
I mean, it's a good job, I, I'm all for it.
All right, guys, if we get in a pickle on a twelve hour shift, there's no reason someone can't rattle from the landfill, sit there for thirty minutes, use about a.
See, that's what I'm saying, split it up. Somebody doesn't wanna stay there for twelve hours, say, hey, I'll work seven to twelve, other guy call twelve to one, seven to one, and then somebody else comes in at one and works to seven.
I agree, but, but like, I said, if, if you're required to make your lunch, then somebody from the landfill.
You know, more I think about.
When they go over there and pick up a dumpster, they can go to lunch.
Well, the way, I, to be honest with you, let's, let's think about it, and then I keep thinking, but then thank you for the brainstorm with. So, I, I work in seven AM to seven PM, twelve o'clock, twelve o'clock come off, I'm gonna go get my lunch. The citizens don't know when I get my lunch.
That's right.
They can just.
You know what, and I won't go, I won't go say that out loud, but they left to go to doctor's appointment.
I, I should be honest, they left, and left the gate.
So it's probably, yeah. Anyway, okay, well, I'm not gonna, okay, well, let's, let me work on it then, okay, maybe hopefully get it done by January first.
All right, so y'all good, two to six on Sunday?
I'm good.
Sunday needs to be kind of stable.
Yeah, two to six, go on and shut down Genito. All right.
Seven to seven.
Yep, seven to seven on the other. Yep. Hell, yeah, that works, that's something done now.
Blew my whole plan, my whole plan is.
Hey, can, can we do, uh, the four year training, is, is, is that an? All right, so. Is that an option to get everybody, because I know Tuesdays.
Well, first, first of all, um, Andrew, first, the first thing they told me is that get Gary Elman to do it, I mean, I don't know who told you that. The four year.
That's what they do.
Right, that's what the guy, the guy said at the meeting, he said, your lawyer, your attorney can do the four year.
But Andrew did some calling on somebody, he called somebody, but anyway, we gotta get the IDA to do four year training, so, the new IDA, they got that four year training. So, we just need a time and date to set it, right? And, and, and you really said, I think you kinda do the four year too, you ready to do it like you need to be a Tuesday.
Tuesday, Bo, if Bo, is Bo ready, or, no, y'all just did it, that's right, y'all just did yours.
Yeah, and Dickie just finished it.
Yeah, and you can, uh, well, you gonna have Mr. Coburn on the, uh, IDA, and he's on the board of the four year.
Their four year council.
Maybe he could do it.
Maybe he can teach.
Lord. That would, that would be entertaining.
He can't.
Open government.
All right, okay, so I just want you to, anyway, so we'll, we'll get that lined up, but, but I think Dickie's finished, I did yours, and that's why.
And how, how much longer do y'all, government, y'all, three, what is it, three years?
Two.
And, and what is it?
Two.
Okay.
So I demand it January.
Yeah, okay.
Well, Mr. Green, he, he's already mayor. You make a note, I'll do the checking.
Billy told me he was already.
It might not be all, it might be only a few of the IDA, yeah, might not be that bad. All right, and then, and I know it's not only, only, and I'll be finished, uh, just so, you, you, and Chairman knows this. The, uh, not away emergency squad asked for their, their funds a little early. Um, uh, the, the big check, which is a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Um, I contacted the three chiefs, I did, Deion was not available, he was out of country, um, this guy named Zach, I think it's right.
Zach Mayor.
Zach, uh, Joyce Neff, and, um, Ryan Welch, and they were okay, no fault, no, they were, they were very gracious, said, yeah, getting out of way, mercy's wanted that money. And we'll, we'll get ours in D somewhere, and, and just wanted y'all to know that, and, and, and thank the fire chiefs for being gracious about that, so. And I think they're, they're there to help the, the brother in, in, in the fight too, so they understand, right? Anything you wanna add to that, um, buddy?
Yeah, I think you, I think you said it well, it was a good meeting, I appreciate you calling me up on it and getting me in touch.
All right.
Before y'all adjourn tonight, uh, speaking of registry services, I, I wanna give you like a, a two minute briefing on what we're donating, what's going on at a night away, Canada's really important tonight. I wanna brief y'all what, what we got going on, because you need to know in case people call you.
You ready for that, right? Let's do, let's do it on a regular meeting, so the citizens can see.
That's fine.
All right, we do, we do it on his personal.
All right, so that'll be part of your report then, but.
Yeah, they haul some things out today, you may get some call, you may get some call right away, because they just haul some things out today.
Okay.
Yeah.
We just let them know, it'll, it'll be publicly.
Yeah, be glad to, I'd be glad to end it tomorrow, report next week.
Okay, all right, Mr. Collins, you got anything, sir?
Yeah, I'm just gonna try to keep a couple of things on track, and maybe mention something that, I don't know if all of you knew, uh, one, we're still looking for clean trash. So we've got a, uh, see if you talked about Francisco was taking.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's, yeah.
You got any more leads?
Yeah, he's got some, uh, so what?
Gary's working on?
Yeah, Gary's working on, and then some industrial, like, uh, shucks, industrial trash, like houses that burned down, but have to cap that because asbestos is not considered clean trash. Anyway, but, but yeah, he's still working on it, he's, he's contacted another guy, the man, the chairman met a while. We're looking at if we can get about a hundred more tons a, a day, fifty to, fifty to a hundred more day, it could probably get us back a degree.
That's what we go for, so that's good. Um, Steve and I had a meeting with Shane in Southside Community College, and we, January first, some of y'all knew this. The students only paid fourteen dollars a night, and they had full majors, linens, uh, clean the floors, very expensive. Yeah, we paid the utilities. So it's now going to twenty dollars per student per night, they bring their own linens. Uh, of course, they'll still go in and clean, because the lineman, they get, they're out there, whether they get money and everything, so there'll still be service going to clean the floors and everything. And we've asked the college to pay the utilities. So, we'll have to see how the math does, but that's gonna take away some of that two hundred fifty thousand dollars lost that we've had out there. So, right now, there's two buildings, another piece of a building.
Right.
That are students, and what we wanna do is transition out of residential citizen housing, and try to get more involved with the, with the community college, and use all the buildings, they were. Agreed, they wanted that.
Right, right.
They want more.[1749.44]
Yeah, they wanted, yeah, and, because that, that, community college is not in the housing business, they wanna, they don't wanna get in.
So if we can, if we can get out of these three or four hundred dollar a month rental people that we pay the utilities on, residential, and get into this, it's gonna give us more income, they take care of the utilities, our cash flow should improve, and, you know, I think it's a good thing, and I, I'd love to be able to, and you guys can tell me whether or not this would ever happen, is, is maybe ask the state for a little bit of budget money to, to work on our buildings.
Okay.
Here for support to community college.
Yeah, and, and speaking of that, mm, like you said, um, Lee Ware is gonna be, he's gonna be, he's, he's gonna be, uh, on the, uh, works meeting, at the board meeting, and I'm thinking about, and I talked to the chairman about this, we're thinking about doing the presentations before the delegations of the.
I got a good idea.
The, I ate dinner with Lee at four bureau.
Okay.
And I was telling him about our relationship with the community college, he said, I didn't know that they had residence, I said, I said, they don't, the citizens of Notaway County, they, they've been supporting this school, and so we gotta change some numbers to, to make it make more sense. So he was very interested in the fact that the county had been helping the community college, so I feel like maybe if we, if we had an idea of, of some needs, to get those barracks ready for the students.
Hey, we've really had, we've given them land, I think.
Yeah, so, so let me add that, add that one too, Bill, so, so I'm the chairman for this, uh, we call it the breed or the Virginia Heartland, but anyway, um, one of the things, we, we, we had, I had a conversation with Dominion Power, uh, one of the things that's really, really important in economic development now is also childcare, and, and, and I, and it comes to, it realized that we do, we do support childcare because of the officers' club, and so I went over to look at that, and some, that building needs to make some improvements too. So Bo, in one of the meetings, pointed the finger at him, Bo made one of the meetings and said, you know, we talking about how much money we brought in, he said, well, how much money are you taking out, Steve? That was a good point, so I've gotten Shane to do work orders, I'm trying to give y'all some data, how many work orders, how many, how many outside contracts are we bringing in, um, compared to how much we trying to do our own maintenance, and so I'm watching those, I wanna get those numbers too, in other words, if we're spending a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in contractors, do I need another?
All of these, all of these things need to be happening, 'cause.
Right.
We cannot look at that tax rate again, we gotta plug the holes.
Yeah, I got you. And you, and, and in the board package, you'll see the, I think, I just came in the day, down for it, what the payment schedule is, so you'll see the first payment is due.
You talking about with mid-year?
Yeah, was it?
Twenty twenty-six.
Twenty twenty-six, so, but it's a big payment.
Twenty-one eighty.
Well, the other thing, and I think I missed you too, Steve, is we need to talk to the state about how our emergency services serving their, their, uh, facilities in Notaway County. We got squads going in now, we've got fire departments, uh, going through prisons and so forth, and they, they're not paying a cent, we're not providing the services for them.
I don't think it would be out of character at all to ask that question to, not to ask them, but maybe to put them on the spot to say, hey, fix this, or say, hey, this is one of my concerns, so I, I don't see anything, if the chairman played each person would have something they wanna talk about.
Well, if, 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 it kinda goes back to, you remember, what, month or two ago, when we mentioned about, um, that the board would be receptive to putting some things together to get to Lee Ware for the general assembly, but I think we might be past the deadline, 'cause I think they wanted it in September.
Well, it doesn't matter, I mean, I'm just gonna.
Yeah.
But I propose it to him, say, look, you know, we're providing all these services for the state, we get nothing.
Yeah.
You know.
You missed, you mentioned some proposed legislation, but.
The thing was about the, the court deal too.
Yeah, like, like a rehab, rehabilitation center from this area, there is none.
Could we, we should, absolutely, and he's a little bit new, Lee, Lee Ware a little new to our county.
Yeah.
Because with years time.
But very experienced.
Well, he's very experienced.
I'll tell you, really nice fellow. That was, that was all I had, Mr. Chairman.
All right, uh, Miss Ingle.
I just finished mine.
All right, Miss Norton?
I'm just, I've had a lot of people lately saying, oh, y'all's meetings are boring, I want everybody listening to know, and yes, they might be boring, but this means we're getting to the depth of what we need to do, checking codes and digging deep, so we can serve our citizens with forethought, the way we should be serving them, especially when we're spending money, and yes, the money's concerned, but the first concern is health, safety, welfare of everybody we serve, and we're, I'm very proud of how we sit down, and yes, the meetings last two or three hours, and there's no drama, but it's not supposed to be, we're doing our job, and I just wanna thank all of y'all for, for, we're working together better than I think any board e- ever has, and I just wanna thank everybody for working together, and, um, we're very blessed, very blessed.
Thank you, Miss Norton, I appreciate that, uh, Mr. Toad?
Mr. Collins had a phone call.
Now, I'm sending, I'm sending hours to my, my constituents. I'm sitting here moving, if I wanted him to send a bird vision.
I, I know you see big names and all, thinking about what I was gonna say, and I really ain't got nothing to say, other than I really enjoy working with y'all. I feel like we get more done at these work session meetings on, on making numbers work and getting by, and having more of a personal relationship with our county attorney, that we don't necessarily get, do in a board meeting, regular board meeting, because we're, we're too busy and we're more so.
Appreciate that.
Yes, sir, we did.
Really did. Would y'all have Catherine in?
I'm on my wife's watch.
From a county attorney's perspective, what I will say is to sort of comment on what Evan said there, a boring meeting is usually a sign of, well.
Well, the last meeting started, you know, with a lot of folks in the room.
Yeah.
But some of them stayed, and as I saw them later in the week, they said, I'm gonna watch your meetings, you guys, you guys are doing a great job, there was a lot of information I didn't know, so, I, I might come up there, but I might, I consider I'm watching, I said, you watch it, watch it on, see what you get. And so, the citizens that didn't normally come, said they were, they were interested in the camp, so. I've been curious, man, over the years, look, setting court, this, you know, it's, it's really, and a lot of the public don't even know they can do it a lot.
You know, uh, people who sit at home and watch reality TV, the best reality TV you'll ever see is in the courtroom, it's free, you can walk.
That's why, that's why I like the court camp.
Well, guys, and, and I, I'll reiterate that sentiment, um, Steve, uh, proud, proud of y'all, proud of the staff, um, proud of the, uh, citizens, early on, you, you made a comment, give us a chance.
That's good.
Yeah, and here we are, pushing, pushing forward, pushing ahead, and, uh, you know, we, we're just, we're just the mouthpieces at times, but, you know, the staff is doing a phenomenal job, Mr. Elder, you got it, it's, it's, from your staff, it's just phenomenal, but again, um, thank you all for what y'all do, and, uh, I, I do know, I won't, I won't put it out there which county it was, but I know, uh, someone had mentioned about, uh, had, had said that, uh, they made reference to another county board should do what Notaway's doing. So, um, hey, you know, but here's the thing, always stay small in your mind, you know, and just be like, hey, look, just don't let your heads get.
And let some bull come out, and then you hope to look big. That's all you kids say.
All right, well, well, thank y'all, and, uh, we entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All of them signify by standing up, good night.